It is three o'clock and I'm calling the meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present except Mayor Pro Tem Adams and If you have any handouts or anything for the council, please give it to our secretary This is Councilwoman Cobb on zone. We have no one on zone. We will have Mr. Don Smith to do the invocation. Councilmember Sagara, you have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, thank you for all you do for us. We need to go to the Lord with thanks even in times we are not requesting something. Lord, the city council has a hard job. Give them the guidance and strength to develop solutions to difficult problems and let us, the citizens, help our council in developing solutions. Remember, the problem is the problem, not the person presenting it. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me as we say our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith, for invocation and Councilmember Sagara for the Pledge Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Solomon.
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion that we approve the agenda?
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I second that motion.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries five to zero. Presentations. Madam Secretary.
PR 25020, Colleen Economic Development Corporation update.
Thank you. Mr. Robb. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Appreciate y'all taking the time to let us do our quarterly report. Wanted to start off by welcoming one of our new staff members, Isaac Almeida. He is our new economic development coordinator. We actually have him here in the crowd. Isaac actually moved to Colleen at the age of seven. He earned his associate's degree while in high school here, and he is actually finishing out his current senior year at Texas A&amp;M Central Texas. So, we're proud to have him. He has a great resume, working in EDCs over in Copperus Cove, working for the post office. So, he has a great responsibility for giving back to the public. So, we're excited to have him here as part of the team.
Welcome.
So, wanted to give a quick project update on some of the items we've been working on over this past quarter. If you go onto the Colleen Business Park, you'll see that we actually have some new tenants. I'll start on the right-hand side at 703 B Swanor Loop. You might know them as Coal Engineering. That used to be within one of the EDC's owned facilities. Since then, we have actually leased that space out to two new businesses here within town. The first is St. Michael's Learning Academy, which provides SAP training for military personnel coming out Fort Hood as well as spouses. We also have a new business, Colleen Wholesale Supply. So, they provide wholesale goods for local convenience stores. And we actually had a picture of our warehouse. They've made some upgrades to the facilities, and the EDC is working to make sure everything is getting brought up to speed within that building and working with them to make sure the building is compliant. At 4501, Roy J. Smith. Triple Impact was actually acquired by MCI, and so they are now our current tenants. They were originally renting about 13,000 square feet. They've since upgraded that into 17,000 square feet. Originally, they were looking about at 42 employees but are now well over 100 and continuing to grow. So, we're working with them, Workforce Solutions Central Texas, to expand out their staffing, and so we're happy to provide more opportunities to grow businesses here within the Business Park. And then while we're doing that, we're also providing some level of maintenance to the exterior, getting everything kind of nice, making everything look a little bit more cohesive between our new partners coming into the park, making it more of a presentable opportunity for new businesses coming to the area. And just some quick updates. U.S.A., they are completed with construction. They've moved their staff over to their new building, and the EDC and Chamber will be partnering for ribbon cutting hopefully in September. So, we'll be excited for that, and we'll invite you out for that opportunity. Workspace USA, they continue to go vertical. They are a small to midsize industrial building development, offering opportunities for smaller businesses to operate within the Colleen Business Park. The Chamber and EDC will be hosting an open house for them in September, so we're excited for that one, and we'll invite you out to that one as well. We continue to make headway on the Blue Acre Development. This is a 16-acre tract that the EDC owns at 601 North Twin Creek Drive. This opportunity will provide four new buildings within the Business Park between 41,000 and 45,000 square feet, so just over 170,000 square feet of new mid-sized flex space. Currently working with the developer to finish out the closing of the site, and we anticipate this to be finished with construction in 12 to 16 months. And as you know, the EDC has been working with Dongjin Sanikim for their Foreign Trade Zone status. I just want to say thank you to councilmembers and city staff in their help in getting that result. We've received our final signed letter of no objection, and we have submitted that to FTZ of Central Texas as well as the company, who will work in partnership with FTZ number 183 to carry forward in submitting their application for Foreign Trade Zone status. We have spoken with the company. Obviously, a lot of the news coming out of Tesla and Sam Tung's deal has greatly impacted the company itself, and so their staff is looking to continue their operations, start ramping up, making sure that they're fully at capacity with their employment numbers. And so, they'll be looking to hire potentially up to 12 new staff members and be fully operational by Q1 2026. So, we're excited with that news and how this is kind of all operated. Again, appreciate y'all's time with this matter. And then Wolf Technology Park. Just to provide some context, it's our 95-acre parcel on the south side of Colleen along 195 and Stagecoach. It is our targeted new business technology park. So, we have to date secured our infrastructure designs, our site layout, and our phase cost of development, and we are currently looking at activating some of those phases within the park. We have begun to actively market this site. You'll see in this picture, we have actually put up signage. We are aware that the sign was actually blown down a couple of weeks ago because of the storm, but that is in production, so we'll get that repaired here fairly soon. But we've built out dedicated webpages, continued our social media presence, and again, developed new signage to align with that. The EDC is currently seeking representation from groups that might be able to help us in that next phase of development. So, we're excited about how that's progressing, and we'll keep y'all up to date with the opportunities that it presents. So, our marketing activities. So, we've continued to answer state RFIs that were received from the governor's office. This past quarter, we responded to seven new projects, and the EDC is currently supporting or has provided over 20 projects or new businesses and assisted them here within the past quarter. At my last presentation before council, we talked about our marketing efforts and the EDC actually ramping up what we do in terms of communication, in terms of our outreach over the next few months. We're really starting to see conferences start picking up for us. So, we just pulled out four conferences within the next two months that we'll be attending. Texas Consultant Summit, which is a brokerage networking event here in Waco. SEMICON, so it's a semiconductor trade show in Chicago that we're really looking forward to. Fabtech, which is advanced manufacturing trade show in Phoenix, as well as AURP, which is a research park that we will be attending in conjunction with our partners at A&amp;M Central And we continue to kind of engage with our local communities. We kind of wanted to show what we've done in that regards. We've partnered with KDH. Over the past three months, we've had eight articles published regarding economic development activity. The same with Austin Business Journal. We've had three articles published in the past three months. So, again, more public engagement, public awareness of what the EDC is currently working on and what we're gearing towards. We've developed out a new LinkedIn page for the EDC and continue to engage on that front. And then we've developed a newsletter branded between the KEDC and the Fort Hood Region Economic Development Foundation that lists targeted over 1,000 recipients, including our media brokers, site selectors, and our targeted industries. And we've continued our public engagement promise. We've set on downtown panel discussions with Councilmember Adams, IBCC, and the Police Department discussing economic development within our community. And we've hosted our first annual economic development luncheon this past month, which was something that we were really happy to see, the level of engagement we saw from the public. We hope to continue that progress as we advance it over next year. And so, our initiatives kind of going forward. We'll continue our marketing presence. We currently have a new KEDC website in development, something more streamlined, something a little bit more of this current generation. We are working on a new branding initiative, both for our logo and branding voice for the organization. And then that'll all be tied together by a new marketing plan of work for our fiscal year 2526. So, we'll continue our public outreach. We have a planned economic development summit for Q1 2026, which we're really excited for, as well as one of the things that we noticed was the need for council packets, either for board members or new council members. And so, that's something I'm reexamining and hope to have by October 1, which would effectively kind of be the, this is the Colleen EDC, Economic Development 101, and things that we can kind of provide more information for either new councilmembers or new board members to the EDC. And so, that is it. I would open the floor to any questions.
Thank you so much, Tyler. One of the things I would like for you to share with the council, I'd like to thank Councilmember Cobb and also Councilmember Kendrick, along with myself. We serve on KEDC, but the Austin journey, business journey, journal, Austin Business Journal. We know that the reason that that was some advertisement done in it is because of outreach to businesses, because the rent is expensive there and a lot of businesses may want to relocate. Please share some light on how we're going to highlight our Colleen Airport and the Colleen area when it comes to the advertisement through KEDC.
So, just to confirm, we currently today have not paid for any advertisement within the Austin Business Journal. All the advertisements we did were pro bono, per the journalists who had reached out to us about items such as the Foreign Trade Zone and other initiatives within the EDC. So, that, no dollars were spent on marketing.
Right. I understand, but I wanted that to be said. Now, how are we going to advertise the, and thank you for that, Wolf Technology Park for the city of Colleen?
So, like I mentioned, we're currently advertising that on our website as well as social media. The article that you might have seen with both KDH and the Austin Business Journal, that was just good old-fashioned reporting, so we didn't actually pay for any advertisement space for those articles. We'll continue to look at potential brokerages who can help us assist with the marketing effort as well as potentially adding it to part of our LoopNet account, which is already a paid service that we provide within our budget. So, those are some of the items that we're looking for in terms of our marketing efforts at the moment.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that, and yes, I know you didn't pay for it, but it's just, I wanted you to say that. Thank you for saying it. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to just actually mention about, on the discussion, public discussion downtown.
Yes, sir.
What are the results of that? What came out of the discussion? So, I think it was a public discussion that you had?
Yes, sir. It was a public forum.
Public, yes.
Yes. So, it was really kind of centering on, one, I think one of the questions that was had was, what is the EDC doing in terms of small business development and what resources we're providing, especially coming out of the BRC being shuttered from the Chambers side of things? And so, one of the things we talked about was, you know, the Chambers partnership with SBA to provide an officer there every Wednesday. We did sign a contract with a company called SizeUp, which is effectively, you can think of it as a SBA agent in your pocket, but allows you kind of to do some business report analysis just on the website itself. So, that is currently on the Chamber website, and we'll integrate and roll that out completely once the new EDC website is up to date. But it's some of the conversations that we're definitely having as we continue to build out the partnership between the Chamber and the EDC going forward is that small business development aspect. One of the other conversations we'd had was making use of the capacity that the city provides, whether it be access to water or electricity. One of the things we kind of talked about was, what does our infrastructure look like? What do we actually have the capacity to provide for? Does it meet expectations for the city? We talked about the difference between a businesses coming in that can provide high levels of workforce employment versus something potentially that is high levels of investment in regards to real property changes and how that potentially could impact the city as well. So, there were a number of discussions around kind of those similar topics, but I think it was a good conversation to be had, and so we're definitely looking for more opportunities to continue to engage the public in that sphere.
Do you, thank you for that. Do you have a lot of public engagement at these meetings, discussions?
It's, I think we kind of need to continue to make the public aware that that engagement's happening. But as KEDC meetings are all open to public, I think, continue kind of marketing in that effort, and we'll continue to make more headway, I think, in that regard, and making more public avenues for either myself or Chambers staff or KEDC board members to kind of discuss the things that we're talking about that we can discuss in public. I think we're always looking for more opportunities.
So, you're just really making the community aware what's actually happening
That's correct.
in the downtown area?
Yes, in regards to our partnerships with the city and our partners in the area.
Great. Thank you, sir.
And thank you for that question, Councilmember Solomon, because KEDC are having KEDC luncheons monthly, and that is more so business owners are bringing new businesses in, keeping the public informed than what they're doing, being that transparency, and having the community engagement. Anyone else, you can go to either or, but I think that is the right approach, as you stated, just keeping the community engaged in what KEDC is doing. So, that was an excellent question. Thank you. Are there any more questions from the council? Tyler, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
PR 25021, presentation by the Carl Sherman Group regarding grocery store interest.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Sherman. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Thank you for inviting me here today. Certainly want to be respectful of the five minutes, and I want to express how grateful I am to the city of Colleen for your focus on the issue regarding food deserts. Colleen is an incredibly rich city in diversity, and it's a city that has been the home of many of our heroes for many years. It's the largest city, one of the largest in the world, military bases here. I think the issue that you're focusing on really shows and reflects to the citizens that you don't have to live in a district in order for you to be concerned about the district. You understand that any leakage that occurs in the city of Colleen happens to all of Colleen, and with $393 million going out of our community in groceries, that's a lot, and it's a huge percentage of the 1.8 billion that we're seeing in retail leakage here. Now, I'm not from here, but I've studied on Colleen quite a bit, and I'm going to use my five minutes to, first of all, show you who I am, I guess, or tell you who I am. I'm Carl Sherman, and the Carl Sherman Group was started in 2019 when I was in the Texas House. I have served prior to that as a city manager and a mayor, so I've sat in your seats as councilmembers as well, and I understand the ramifications of the policies that you set and how they affect folks who have sat in Kent Cagle's seat like myself administratively and how to get things done. During the time that I served, I had several cities come down and ask me to be their city manager. I prayed about it and did not feel that God was leading me back to being a city manager. One of those cities, which was the first city that I ever worked for as a city manager in Ellis County, came back and presented a proposal that I serve as a consultant for them. After praying about it and then speaking with our general counsel in the Texas House, who drafted a contract for me to provide our services as a consultant, well, it was just me in the beginning, and we provided consulting services for them and continued to grow in the private sector as well, which leads me to how we've grown. This is very unusual for me to be down here when our business has grown through referrals. But my former chief of staff, who is an Air Force veteran, who knows that I like to make sure that I'm aware of what's going on around, saw that the city of Colleen was talking with a grocery store about coming here, and that's what started our interest in coming here. She's now my executive assistant, and we continue to focus as a company on our corporate values, which are simply that we are trusted, creative, synergistic, and goal-oriented. And that's a picture of me. We can pass through that really quickly. As a young man, I started a company, took it public, traded on the NASDAQ in the U.S. and the Frankfurt Exchange. I also served on the NTTA Board in North Texas where Kent Cagle also served, I believe. These are our principal advisors on the team, and we have a certified economic developer, also a former city planner who does a lot of the land use planning for our clients, and Representative Eddie Morales, who is currently in the Texas House, who served with me with a group that I started called the Mayor's Club, Mayor Nash King, because I felt that the state does not respect local control, and so I put together a group called the Mayor's Club, in which the club is made up mostly of Republicans, and they made me the chair, and Hugh Shine, who was the Mayor Pro Tem of Temple, Texas, was my vice chair. This is a little bit about them. Because I only have five minutes, I'm going to just go through them rather quickly. Kay Patrick, she's done a lot of economic development in the North Texas area, Grand Prairie, the development you see there on George Bush, that's Kay Patrick. The development that you saw started in Waxahachie, that's Kay Patrick. She is highly recruited and respected among economic developers. And again, Representative Eddie Morales out of Eagle Pass, he's also a city attorney. His firm is a city attorney, and that's not a plug for Eddie Morales. James Moon is also an attorney, and he works a lot with many of the smaller companies. This is what our strategy is when we come in, is to, we want you to know, we focus on retail trade show representation. That is certainly what your economic development corporation does, and from the presentation, I think they do a great job of getting the city out there and getting economic development, especially in the industrial area. Broker and site selector engagement, site readiness, and incentive packaging as a part of this, and ongoing reporting and support. Again, all of this will be, or is in your package. I'm not accustomed to doing it five minutes, so I'm just going to go to my close. I know that citizens can also get this. I want you to know in closing, this to the Carl Sherman Group is not about transactions. We're about building relationships, and that's why for our consulting company, we invest in doing strategic summits a day and a half with the mayor, council, and city manager, and your city secretary, sometimes a police chief, is there depending on the mayor and council's request, and we cover all accommodations, housing, and food, and because this is important to us, as someone who served at all levels, what drives me crazy is seeing local government being trounced on and local government being dysfunctional. And I'm not saying you all are dysfunctional, okay? But this is about good governance, and how you build good governance is that you get to know one another, and that's something that we believe in to ensure that you have the same vision and that you are working on behalf of the citizens here of Colleen, and you get a chance to do that. So, that's a part of what we do. Again, it's important to us that as a city and as a consultant, that we partner with you. This is about building relationships so that we can build a better future. It's not just about a grocery store. We believe from our track record that we can be successful, because at the end of the day, it's a lot about the relationships that you have, that speed of trust, and it matters. There are some areas that folks will say, well, you can't get a grocery store here. Well, I just told you, you've got retail leakage just in the grocery sector alone of $393.8 million. That's coming out of this community, and it doesn't matter whether they're in District 1, 2, 4. It's coming out of one Colleen, and that means that people in that part of the city are not as healthy as they could be because they don't have access to food. So, again, thank you for your genuine interest in this part of the city. I think it reflects your heart and how you're looking at all of the city as one Colleen. I will stop now for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir, so kindly for driving from the Dallas area. I apologize for cutting your time to five minutes because you did travel far, but the individuals that presented for a grocery store prior to you only gave them five minutes, and we And we also have another grocery store that Mr. Cagle and I are, will be talking with. So this is, I know from just my perspective, because we have other people trying to come in also, just like you heard other individuals that, you know, want to come before us and talk to the council. So I thank you for that. But I do have some questions for you, Mr. Sherman. My first question is, you talked about, and I'm just direct, so I'm just going to get to it. You discuss the, you have a wealth of knowledge, being at the House of Representatives, mayor, city council, city manager, I mean, wow, that's an impressive resume. I agree with the relationship and the partnership. In a grocery store, there's no doubt about the data, statistical data, because a lot of this we have heard somewhat, but not to what you just said. What would make you different than our KEDC looking or another organization like yours that come before the council and pitch and say, "We can also bring a grocery store"? What makes you different?
Yeah. We are not your EDC. We're not coming to any client to be their EDC. The EDC's job is challenging in and of itself. They cover everything. We're specialists. When you think about a neurologist or cardiologist, we're focusing on one, two, and most three things for our clients: grocery stores, hotels, and restaurants. We deal with the strength that we have. And so we're not looking to compete with your economic development corporation. We couldn't do that. We couldn't do their job. We're looking to complement what they do. I've sat in your seats. Most citizens, they know what they want, and typically, your economic development corporations, their policies don't really align with them focusing on areas of needs, it's on areas of most return. And so that's where we come in. We're focused on that one thing for the city, and we do it well because we build relationships with these entities. It's amazing how many times retailers sometimes have biases to certain areas, and they choose not to go there. Even if you have over 35,000 people in District 1, even if the average household income is a little over 35,000, which is sufficient, and it also means that there is subsidy there, which is also a huge revenue source for the $700 billion-plus grocery industry. So it's sustainable, but you've got to be with the right partner. And I'll say this: cities have to stop begging for retailers who don't want to come. Because if you have to beg them to come, they will sometimes put deed restrictions that keep others from coming in, similar to an abusive relationship. If I can't have you, nobody can. And so I think you have to be also focused on who you partner with.
Yes, sir, and I like how you, taking into consideration your titles you held, I have to be careful what I say, how you threw in there that, "I want you to know, I know the statistical data in District 1." I caught that. Yes, sir, that was impressive. My other question to you, a grocery store, and I've asked the other individuals this, and the person that the two other that may be coming, they'll get the same question. What are the odds, I know partnership, relationship, things of that nature, what are the odds we, if we go in agreement with you? How long, because I didn't see it in your slides, the process to even consider a grocery store? And I know you can't go into that. Would that be a year, two years? I understand that there's no guarantee, I already heard that, not from you, but prior. I'm not sure if you can even go into that, but can you just touch it a little bit to give us some kind of understanding? Because you, me, and I understand you are consultant, and you're playing with the big boys and girls, and you're very private about, just by your slides, I can only assume about the information you're going to share. And that's business, I got it. But what else can you give us?
Mayor Nash King, thank you for the compliment of me being, that was impressive. But I want to be very clear, we just want to be effective. And we haven't gotten to where we are by trying to impress anyone. It's simply about looking at the data to understand, if I'm going to represent you, I need to know about the community as much as I can.
Right.
And our team, the same thing. So they have more intel than I have on the city of Colleen. We want to be successful. That means it's driven based on data first. I understand that you commissioned a, I believe, a grocery study or a retail study. We would need a grocery study because that is a little dated, and a lot has changed in the marketplace. Because of our relationships, we are, the discount that we get for studies is material for our clients. So we're able to do that. That takes about six to eight weeks, because we're on the ground. And then after that, or during that time, during that time, we're going to ICS, ICSC, which, that's going to be next year in May. But in January, there is one big one as well. And one of the things about the relationships that we have is that we are in a larger market in Dallas, and then Houston, Austin, San Antonio, which a lot of the brokers are in those larger markets, that you would now have a constant representation with those folks. And certainly Waco is important, but the bigger the pool, the more opportunities that we have to make connections that work for the city of Colleen.
Oh, oh, yes, sir. Oh, you finished. Oh, okay. Well, with you, being a consultant, there's no doubt in my mind, you're going to collect data, because you wouldn't have showed up. I mean, you're very thorough. And, okay, well, it takes a study that...
Yes.
Okay, all right. Counsel, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Sherman, and thank you for your service, you know, to the public, everything that you've done, and we appreciate your presentation. But with all due respect, you hadn't said anything, you know, you, we know all the issues here that's going on, and the key is not, you know, relationships or a nice fancy grocery store, and all that stuff we understand. And you mentioned, which is good, because I think it's very important that we need to stop begging. And the only way that a business stops begging is if you have the demand. If you have no demand, then it's hard to get somebody in here, because they need to be profitable. And you don't have to look very far, other than the grocery stores that were here and pulled out of our north side. We had HEB, we had IGA, and HEB is a million-dollar company. They can afford a building, it was paid off. But when they came and they left, we're losing $40,000, because we're in a side, you know, if we do build a grocery store there, we're in a side that people want low prices. You know, they don't want to pay high, it's a lower part of our, and making that profitable, putting a grocery store, no matter what, if somebody says, "I want to do it," you know, they need to come with the funds, because, you know, it can't be sustained with the city if they start losing money. So the big picture, the whole big picture, is how are we going to bring traffic to that grocery store to keep them profitable, when they got to compete with four, five, six of them on the south side? You know, what's going to bring that over there? So that's the, that's the overall big challenge, because we've heard before, you know, how people are going to do great things, they're going to, we already know that, you know, we know that, what the need is. But nobody hits on that. Nobody says, you know, "I got a grocery store that's, that's figured out a way to be profitable, where you don't have enough clientele to occupy it on a daily basis." And that's the, the big challenge that we have. But, but nobody wants to do that. So I appreciate the presentation and all that, but I think there's more to it than what you just presented here. Thank you.
So, Mr. Sherman, I was just trying to say it in a more tactful way. The slides that you have presented, it's nice, but I guess the million-dollar question is, what makes you, of them relationships, and Councilmember Segarra stated that you hadn't said anything, is there a reason? You only gave us so much information and really didn't go into the whole layout? I don't know if that's just the way your business work, if we sign agreement, or where's the meat at, that the council, I don't vote. So I'm just trying to understand, and look at their faces. Is it a reason? And why are you pulling that up? I'm going to go to, that's my question, and I'm going to go to Councilwoman Gonzalez. Why are you pulling that up?
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Again, I always want to make sure to say that we appreciate you coming in and trying to assist our city. One of my commitments was to leave no stone unturned, so I'm glad there's other people helping us turn these rocks. So it's no easy feat, obviously it would have been done already. We've been dealing with this challenge since 2019. So I think the mayor kind of touched on my question, which was asked of the other members, is what are you going to do differently? So since 2019, there have been collective groups of people who have been researching and, and city organizations that have been assisting and trying to attract grocery stores. There was a little bit of begging, as you mentioned earlier, but then also looking at alternative options, co-op grocers and things like that. So when we're looking at this, we feel, I will not speak for the council, but there is a sentiment that we've kind of gotten to the last of the last. So there is a sense of excitement, that there's some, some fresh eyes that are coming to look at our area, but the question is still, what are we, what are we going to do differently? What can we do differently? The profitability point that Councilmember Segarra mentioned, and before you answer that question, the council profitability portion, we've kind of already determined either it would need to be a boutique grocer, or it would need to be a combination of retail mixed-use along with this grocery store as an anchor. And so I understand profitability, I just want to keep in mind for the citizens of Colleen, when we can have nice things, and those nice things don't have to be super expensive, but they can capitalize on some of our, our best assets, which is our diversity. And so when, this is just me, I'm thinking of, it's been referred to me as a, for example, a world food mart, you know, or some kind of center where there's multiple boutique grocers in one central location. There are so many options, sir, but if you could just kind of help us out and tell us, what will your organization do differently, maybe that we haven't already tried, or that we haven't thought of at this point?
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez and Councilman Segarra, former mayor Segarra, and mayor and council. What we do is, we have a professional approach to the whole process. And I know that often, as I've sat in your seats, that you may come to this position with some implicit bias. We have some retailers that do the same thing. If you look at North Texas, there is a South Dallas area in which the city incentivized a Starbucks to come to that area. Starbucks refused to even look at it. Their site locator said, "No, our numbers don't show that this store would do well." It is the number sixth, number six profitable Starbucks in the nation. There's a pent-up demand in District 1, and the data shows $393.8 million leaves the city of Colleen. So whether we are working with you or you choose to say that you're, you just can't envision that any grocery store would work there, somebody thought that it might, because they put a deed restriction saying that you cannot have a grocery store here, period. Why would you have to contractually stop another grocery store from coming in? You're in your seat because the people elected you to represent their interest, and that's what you're doing. What we're talking about is going through the retail trade show representation, or being there, representing you, as some other consultants do, and representing other clients. And when we're talking about site location opportunities, we're talking about the city of Colleen, Colleen, North Colleen for them to consider. Those relationships do matter, and I know that you know the value of relationships, but also expertise. To have a certified economic developer on our team that has a long history, over 15 years, of working and being the paradigm shift for those communities, that's, that's what we offer. And when it comes to going into more details of what we're doing, I appreciate you acknowledging that at the beginning, that there are some things that are not said. You have to make the decision as to whether or not you will go with an outside consultant or someone who's been here or any other companies. But I know that North Colleen has been without a full-service grocery store since 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you for not giving up.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned, sir, I want to say first of all, thank you for coming and bringing another perspective view. We need to do everything that we can to get, and we need to keep on trying. We just keep, need to keep on knocking on doors and finding ways that we can get a grocery store up in the north. And I think the council is, is doing that, and we're doing that with caution. You mentioned about Starbucks, could you go more in detail? Were you the consultant company that bought that Starbucks?
No.
Okay. Okay, because you mentioned that, and I was just trying to understand, it's the number six, you said it was the number six in the nation?
Yes. I cited them because they are with a developer that we work with. That was their client. And I cited them because it's evident that you can have some preconceived notions that a certain area won't do well for a particular business. But often, there is a pent-up demand in those communities where the consumers want choices, but they're not given those choices.
Got you. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. We have one more person. Councilmember Kendrick.
There we go. All right, I just had a couple of questions. I feel like you still didn't answer the question, what would you do differently than anybody else that has come to the council with the grocery store? The next thing, you talked about Austin, Houston, and Dallas. Have you done any studies in cities that are close to the size of Colleen, like Lubbock, Waco? And there's a few other cities that have about the same population as Colleen. We can talk about the big cities, but talk about cities that are the same size, meaning we can kind of put those pieces together. And the last thing that I had, if nothing on the north side has changed since 2019, what would be incentives for a grocery store to come here?
Okay. Councilman Kendrick, the reason I mention those cities is because they have retail conventions. That's where the brokers gather. That's where the economic development directors gather, and that's where the site locators go. And so I only mentioned them because that's where they go. And if you have a consultant that's in Dallas already, those are events that we're at already. There's no added cost for us to be there. So it wasn't in reference to potential cities like Colleen. Does that, does that make sense? So so and as far as what we would do different, I'm not sure everything that the other companies have presented to you. But there is a conventional method in which we go after the particular business that you are looking to have. Grocery stores have their own trade events that they go to, conventions that they go to. They don't always go to some of the ones like in Austin that's coming up Red River. They're generally not, they don't have a strong presence there. We won't waste time going to the ones where they don't have a strong presence. We're going where the fish are. And so we would be there representing you, along with other clients too, to gather, you know, the the prospects of getting them to come to Colleen site to look at the site location. We have relationships with those groups. And sometimes, Councilman Kendrick, the relationship is what closes the deal. It's the speed of trust. And as far as the market in District One, you have a market there. They just can't spend their money at home. They have to travel out. And from the data that I have, 82% of the people have, they drive by themselves here in Colleen. So they have, mobility is not an issue by and large for the majority of people here. So they drive their dollars out of District One and maybe to another district. But also, you still have the leakage of 393.8 million dollars that's leaving the city of Colleen. I'm not talking about the 1.8 billion retail, but this is just grocery. And so they're spending their money somewhere. Question is whether we want them to spend it here in Colleen and whether we want them to be healthier and have those those choices. So and then if you look at the four things that we have with the broker and site selector engagement, that's that's extremely important, and and our relationships are what we broker on. I mean, it comes down to relationships. If, you know, we're trying to sell them something that they don't want, then we know what they want, we know what they don't want, and that's that's a part of our process. We bring you the grocery stores that we believe you would want, the citizens would want, and we negotiate to get them here.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sherman, just by, as you continue to speak, and if I'm wrong, correct me. Your plan is such a higher level. The reason I say that, because as you continue to have the conversation with the council members, you had already given us your accolades at where you have served as first the House of Representative. You were the mayor, you was the city manager. So everything we have done, including Mr. Cagle, you have even taken it higher to a House of Representative. And I was just Brad Buckley and Hillary Hicklin. What you told us was say, hey, I, relationships are important to you. Why? Because I'm letting you know the relationships I have built over the years. I'm letting you know the level I have worked on and continue to work in those areas. So for you not to share that, and I could be wrong, what I'm what I'm understanding is the where I'm coming from, we just don't put our information out there. We're paying with the big lease because you said, he asked you the question, and why you are not at the small city? You say you go after the big fish. So as I'm just listening to you, you want to build and establish a relationship with us and not just to start to just do this, a grocery store, but you want to build a relationship to do other things with us, to help us continue to develop our city in economic ways, to bring in not only a grocery store, I can help you with this business because I have built all of these relationships throughout Central, throughout Texas, which is a positive thing. And one of the things I have to agree with you on, it's all about relationships, it's who you know. And you have such a, and and if I'm wrong, you have a broad network throughout your years and your experience. And that's what I've gotten from your conversation and what you keep pointing out to us is to leverage our existing relationships to generate interest and schedule site tours. It's all about building a relationship, bringing people in and using your networks that you have worked with as a city manager, as a House of Representative, and also as a mayor. So
Mayor.
So I'm, one more thing, I'm not finished. Thank you. And which is, it's it's really big, and and I'm not trying to hype you up or anything, but all the things that other, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're bringing a different perspective. Everybody can bring the same thing. And I don't know, because we don't know about the other company that's coming in, what they're bringing or not bringing. But what I'm asking you is this. Relationship is is great, and I thank the individuals that brought you to us so we can talk with you. But once those relationships are established, and I'm just cutting to all that, I'm past that now. And and if we select you, just putting that out there, and you get $50,000, whatever the case might be, I think it's 50,000. I'm not even sure what the council do. Where do we go from there if you're selected? Can you go from that perspective? If you're selected?
Well, Mayor, thank you for the complimentary things you said about me.
No, I've just my perspective, that's all. I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
God has been good to me.
Amen.
And you don't have relationships over time without delivering what you said you would deliver. You just don't. People don't have time to work with capricious, you know, fickle, unproductive people. And and so I'm grateful that the Lord has blessed me to be around and to leave when I wanted to leave. As far as what we bring, we bring expertise, we bring relationships. The expertise, you know, you can gain, but the relationships are hard to gain because you have to be close with people. And pretty soon, if you're not, if you're not delivering, and, you know, you, those relationships won't last. So we, you know, we would love the privilege of of working with you. But we're not, when, when I said Houston, Dallas, San Antonio, Austin, I'm simply saying, we're not going after those cities. We are going there because there's, that's where the conventions are.
Right. I understood that.
And that's where the site locators are. That's, you know, where the economic development professionals are. So that's, that's the reason we go there. We want to bring the best opportunity for you to be successful. And I think that 2019 is a long time. And I don't know if you want to continue to consider others, but we'd like you to consider us too.
Yes, sir. I thank you for that. We won't be making the decision tonight, Mr. Sherman. And I appreciate you coming all the way from Dallas. I appreciate the research that you have done on our city. I also appreciate your willing to want to work with us. Is there any closing remarks before we go into the next agenda item? Yes?
The city of Colleen is a great city. It's a question of whether you all would want to work with us. That's it, period. Thank you for caring about the people of Colleen, that you would put so much time and investment of sweat equity in trying to get a solution. I know it's, it's a difficult one and really appreciate you all putting this on the agenda. There are so many communities that have given up on addressing this issue for those who need it most. God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, we're going to discuss items three through 17 for the August 19, 2025 regular session. There will be no actions during these discussions. Madam Secretary.
MN 25021, consider minutes of special city council meeting of July 22, 2025. MN 25022, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of August 5, 2025. RS 25128, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a sub-recipient agreement with Families in Crisis, Inc. to provide tenant-based rental assistance, TBRA, to eligible populations experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness in accordance with community development policies and procedures and in compliance with HUD TBRA program statutes and regulations.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. McNair.
Families in Crisis, let me go here. Each year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, awards home investment partnership funds to eligible entitlement communities, also known as participating jurisdictions. The city of Colleen is recognized by HUD as a PJ and receives home funds annually. HUD allows a PJ to subaward home funds to sub- recipients to carry out home activities. Eligible home activities include homeowner rehabilitation, homebuyer activities, rental housing, and tenant-based rental assistance, also known as TBR. Each home activity must benefit a low to moderate income household. TBR provides financial assistance to income-eligible households for rent, security deposits, and under certain conditions, utility deposits. Assistance for utility deposits may only be provided in conjunction with a TBR security deposit or monthly rental assistance program. Families in Crisis, FIC, has experience in administering administering rental assistance programs and is a HUD certified housing counseling agency. FIC will target persons or families currently receiving services within its operations. Any qualified household within the city of Colleen may apply. The amount of the agreement is $300,000. This amount includes direct assistance and project delivery costs. FIC TBR goals is to assist up to 15 households with up to 24 months of rental assistance, establish long-term housing stability by reducing the number of households that are homeless or at risk of homelessness, reducing the number of households at risk of eviction, providing supportive services and education for household self-sufficiency, and increasing housing affordability for low-income households. Staff recommends that the city council authorize city managers to designate and execute a home investment partnership sub-recipient agreement with Families in Crisis for the purpose of administering a tenant-based rental assistance program in an amount of $300,000. I like to note that this is not funding for the Rent in Crisis program. It's a separate agreement.
And you have oversight over the program?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, we do, we do. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you for that presentation, madam. There was a couple of questions from some of our citizens, and one of them was, under this assistance program, do you know, are you aware of how many times someone can qualify for this type of assistance? Is this a one-time, long-term, short-term assistance?
Initial qualification is at the application leg of the program, and every year they will have to requalify unless they report that they've made income that exceeds the 80% area median income. They will be able to stay on for up to two years as long as they are able to maintain the housing. And that's maintaining through the terms of the lease with the private landlord.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for that question. So you said they can stay on the program for 24 months?
Yes, up to two years.
Would you explain that they have a job?
They may or may not have a job. So affordability when it comes to housing is when a household pays 30% of their gross income towards the housing expense, and that's housing and utilities costs. So this program is for people that are paying more than 30% and probably likely are paying 50% or more. So depending on what that household income is, it must not exceed 80% the area median income. So anything below that, only 30% of what they make will go towards the rent, and then the subsidy comes in and fills in the gap. And like a Section 8 voucher, someone could eventually gain income to where they price themselves out of the program. But this 24 months is getting into lock and step with what the current administration is proposing when it comes to rental assistance programs, that they are up to 24 months only.
Okay. Thank you, as always, Tip, I mean, Ms.
Thank you.
McNair, McNair, thank you so much for everything you do. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25129, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing contract amendment number one with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. for the Featherline Road Reconstruction Project in the amount of $82,173.76.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Zager has the the next two items, this item and the next one. Good afternoon, Mr. Zager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, fellow council members. We're here to present and seek the approval of the contract amendment with Kimley Horn and Associates for the Featherline Road Reconstruction Project. Remember, the project kind of started back in September 17th of '24 when we actually created the capital project, moved through the bonds. And then on January 7th, '25, we approved a design contract with Kimley Horn to provide professional engineering design for the Featherline Road Reconstruction Project. The project included the full replacement of the road between Chaparral and Stage Coach. Project also included the installation of a new 12-inch water line along the west side of Featherline. And that project is included in the 2025 Water and Wastewater Master Plan. This pro, this water line addresses the future growth needs for the upper pressure plane. So it doesn't address the lower pressure plane, which is the Yow Ranch, and some of the issues that were in the past and the perception issues of water pressure in that area. This is actually a separate line. Let's see. And then see, so during the design, while we're looking at this 12-inch line for the length of Featherline, we were looking where we needed to connect it on Stage Coach. So we found that we needed to extend that water line from the intersection of Stage Coach and Featherline west to the intersection of WS Young. We're looking where a good location for the water line is going to be in the future. So we were trying to get it outside the roadway since right now the road is under construction to be replaced. So anything we have to do in the next couple of years, we want to make sure that we weren't going to be touching that roadway. The current contractor is working on the roadway limits, and we are going to be doing a change order to get a road connect, just a water connection at the intersection of WS Young to go from the north side or the intersection south to outside the roadway. All this, by the way, is being funded out of the bond money for the water and sewer project, not the road project. So anything related to the water will be funded out of the bond for the water and sewer projects. Contract amendment includes the design of the water line to get to along the south side of Stage Coach up to the intersection. Up, that's missed, missed. Oh, that's missed type of tremere. It's supposed to be WS Young. And is in the amount of eighty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents. This kind of shows the limits. The blue is the limits of the roadway replacement that's going on right now. The orange is the water line, the Featherline Road project. The red is the limits of the design change for this contract to get that water line designed up to the intersection of WS Young. And staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager designate to authorize the contract amendment for Featherline Road construction in the amount of eighty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents. And I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions from the council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five one-three-zero, consider memorandum resolution authorizing change order number one for the sidewalk and ADA ramp improvements project with Jardine Enterprises LP in the amount of eighty-six thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars.
Okay. So we're here for this change order one, which is actually a final change order for this project. This is, the sidewalk improvement project was included in the twenty-twenty-three capital improvement plan. It was part of the ARPA funding and also child safety funding to fund this project to mainly replace handicap ramps, improve sidewalk needs around schools. On September third, twenty twenty-four, the city council awarded the construction contract with Jardine Enterprises LP in the amount of five hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. During construction, this was, I believe, eleven locations around the school, along the city at-school locations, and then also one on WS Young. We were installing new sidewalk, replacing ramps, installing new ramps, and making sure that we're going to meet the requirements of PROWAG, the Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guideline requirements. That was the one that was adopted by us and put into code back in twenty-one, and then recently, about a year ago, was adopted by TechStop. As part of these replacements, you know, you have two options. You put in a new ramp, which you're obligated to meet all requirements, or you have an option where if you add an existing or replacing an existing ramp, you have what they call is an alteration. It's the, we're going to try to meet every requirement as best we can, but there's some instances where you may not do it. You may not meet those requirements. You may not get those slopes because the roadway is too steep, the cross slope, and you just can't physically do it without having to rip up the entire intersection. So they have certain other requirements in PROWAG where you can make a modification, do the best you can, but then you have to extend the amount of sidewalk you have to replace. And those bring up those additional costs, which were, at the end of the project, we started resulting in actually an amount that's above the contract amount where we need to have this change order. This change order does represent the final quantities. We had to do it at all the locations. They include the initial sidewalk. We had to do curb modifications, gutter modifications, things we had to do in order to get these ramps in, truncated domes. And then we had to get inspected by the state to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements, and then results in a punch list if there's any deficiencies that the contractor will have to go back and fix. But regardless, you know, we still have the quantities of the work they actually did, and that is what this change order is for. This change order is being funded through the Child Safety Fund, which is intended for this use. Then staff recommends that the city council authorize the execution of change order number one with Jardine Enterprises for the sidewalk and ADA ramp improvement project in the amount of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Zager.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five one-three-one, consider a memorandum resolution denying an operating authority to Limo Company. Good afternoon, Mayor, counsel.
Good afternoon, Ms. Warren.
The City of Colleen Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-nine, provides an overview of how an operating authority is sought and granted or denied by the city council to promote adequate and efficient ground transportation service within the city. An applicant must file an application fee and supporting documentation to begin the process of obtaining an operating authority. Once an operating authority is approved by the city council, it is valid for five years and is non-transferable. On Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Limo Company submitted an application, paid the required three hundred dollar fee, and supplied some supporting documents to the city secretary's office. However, upon initial review of the supporting documents, my office identified that the applicant did not have proof of insurance coverage for the three vehicles shown. The applicant was notified by phone call and email of the unmet requirement on March eighteenth. Since March, the city secretary's office has attempted to contact the applicant several times by phone and email regarding the missing proof of insurance to no avail. The applicant stopped by City Hall in late July to discuss the matter and stated he still had not been able to acquire insurance for his operating authority. A deadline of Tuesday, August fifth, was communicated by my office to the applicant to provide proof of insurance, or my office would have to recommend denial of the operating authority per the Code of Ordinances as the application cannot remain pending indefinitely. The applicant paid the three hundred dollar application processing fee as previously noted in March, and the fee was deposited in the city secretary's taxi franchise account accordingly. Staff recommends the city council deny the operating authority to Limo Company as the insurance coverage requirements have not been met, and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
No, ma'am. I do not see him.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilwoman Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question I ask, if we deny this, will that fee be returned to him?
That is up to the city council. We can, we have the ability to return that fee to the applicant, yes, sir. We can assure refund.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Solomon, in council, Mr. Kager was coming to you. I highly recommend, times are hard, and you have the best intent. I believe in small business owners. I believe everyone should get an opportunity. And I think my recommendation to the council that his three hundred dollars should be refunded back to him, and maybe in a month or six months from now, he may get enough money to, I'm not saying that's the case, to have insurance to go back to his business.
Yes, ma'am.
That's just a recommendation. Any more questions? And if the council do agree to that, there will be an emotional direction that he will be refunded, the three hundred dollar fee, when we get to that item on the regular agenda. Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you.
Great job. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five one-three-two, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Schluter Group for state legislative representation.
Mr. Kager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. As you know, we do our best to actively engage with the state legislature and state agencies, just as importantly, on matters of interest to the city in accordance with our adopted state legislative priorities and principles. And since two thousand and one, we have contracted with a legislative consultant to support that strategy. The Schluter Group has been engaged since two thousand and two, and some of their notable achievements include the establishment and expansion of Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, enhancements to US one-ninety, now I-fourteen, establishment of the Texas Mayors of Military Communities, and subsequent DAg funding and reimbursement for state veterans' exemptions. The proposed agreements for a three-year term from August twenty, twenty-five to August nineteen, twenty twenty-eight, with a two-year renewal option, August twenty, twenty-eight to August nineteen, two thousand and thirty, and the fee of a hundred thousand per year for three years, up to five years. And it is our recommendation that you authorize me to execute the professional services agreement with the Schluter Group for state legislative representation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Kager, there is no questions of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-five zero-four-three, hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six annual budget.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Tangeland. Tangeland, how are you?
Good. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. This item is for the second budget public hearing for the twenty-twenty-six proposed budget. As you can see, we're here in the budget calendar, August nineteen. Because we need changes to the proposed budget, we are required to hold the second public hearing. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-six proposed budget with changes, as you can see, the general fund is balanced as a water and sewer fund. The solid waste fund, the drainage hotel is balanced. And we have other funds with a surplus, and then other funds are using their fund balance. And the total of expenses for fiscal year twenty-six is two hundred and eighty-seven million. That is increase of nine point seven percentage from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five adopted budget. The changes from the proposed for general fund is two point four for revenues, and the expenses that we added was one percent COLA and compensation plan implementation, traffic signal inventory and fire maintenance plan, four officers and one sergeant for the police department, the assistant city manager, a deputy chief for fire department, the IT security manager for IT department, the municipal court bailiff, children's advocacy center allotment, the body armor for police, the field training officer incentive pay increase for police, and we reclass a captain to battalion chief for the fire department, and also investigator, arson investigator assignment pay increase for fire department. And also it's a reduce of city council travel and training. That amount, like I say, is a two point four, two point five million for general fund. For debt service fund, we added some property tax that will be reduced of the amount of fund balance that we use when we pay debt service of fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. For hotel, we increased interest income to cover for the one percent COLA compensation plan implementation. For aviation enterprise fund, we have a one percent COLA and comp plan implementation that is going to be out of their, not their fund balance, but their surplus. For solid waste, we have interest income to offset the one percent COLA, I think, comp plan implementation. For the water and sewer, same. We have interest income and the COLA comp plan implementation. Same for drainage utility enterprise fund. And for internal service fund, we're using a fund balance to do the COLA and the comp plan implementation. Same for risk management internal service fund. And for information technology internal service fund, we are increasing the amount for the IT security manager. That is the amount that is coming from general fund. And the one percent COLA comp plan implementation, we will just fund balance. Those are the changes, and the recommendation is to hold a public hearing. Public hearing notice published August tenth, twenty twenty-five in accordance with Section Fifty-six of the city charter via the local newspaper. I will happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, and your staff, every year, you don't disappoint. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to ensure our budget is correct and updated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no questions of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, before Madam Secretary speak, Ms. Mesher, I mean, yes, Ms. Mesher has seven items on the agenda. And good afternoon as you come up. Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-five zero-four-four, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by National Logistics Training Center, Inc. on behalf of the Catholic Diocese of Austin, flume number twenty-five dash zero-three, to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map from a residential mix designation to a regional commercial designation for approximately thirteen point seven acres out of the GW Ferris survey, abstract number three-zero-six. The subject properties are locally addressed as one-zero-eight and one-one-zero West Elms Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Mrs. Mesher.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. This item is a request for a future land use map amendment for approximately thirteen point seven acres. If approved, the applicant intends to submit a subsequent request to rezone the property from R-one to B-four in order to develop the property into a vocational trade school affiliated with Fort Hood. Subject property is located in the intended growth area on the growth sector map and designated as residential mix on the future land use map. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is a side-by-side. On the left is the current future land use map, and on the right is the proposed amendment to the future land use map. So you can see the applicant is requesting to change the designation from residential mix to regional commercial. This is a view of the subject property facing south. This is a view of the property facing north across Elms. I'm sorry, view from the subject property facing north. This is a view from the subject property facing west on Elms and facing east. We notified the owners of seventy-seven surrounding property owners, properties regarding this request, and we've received zero written responses. This is the notification boundary for that item. With that, staff finds that the request supports the city's goal of cultivating a more resilient and self-sustaining local economy as outlined in the comprehensive plan, and we are therefore recommending approval of the request as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission on July fourteenth also recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-five zero-four-five, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Quintero Engineering, LLC on behalf of SS Springs, LLC, flume number twenty-five dash zero-four, to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map, flume from a regional commercial designation to a residential mix designation for approximately seven point two acres being part of Lot Two, Block One, Rosewood Edition. The subject property is locally addressed as five-five-zero-zero Rose Garden Loop, Colleen, Texas.
Yes, ma'am. This is a future land use map amendment request for the property located at fifty-five-hundred Rose Garden Loop. It's approximately seven point two acres. If approved, the applicant intends to submit a subsequent request to rezone the property from B-three to R-two in order to develop it as an additional phase of the Rosewood Springs subdivision consisting of two family homes. The property is located within the intended growth area on the growth sector map and designated regional commercial on the future land use map. The red star on your screen indicates the location of this property. On the left is the existing future land use map, and on the right is the request. So in this case, you can see that it's currently designated regional commercial, and the request is to change the designation to residential mix. This is a view of the property facing north from Rose Garden Loop. This is a view of the existing two-family residential on the opposite side of Rose Garden Loop. This is a view facing southwest on Rose Garden Loop. We notified thirty-two surrounding property owners, and to date, we've received two written responses and support and eight written responses in opposition to the request. There were three citizens that spoke in opposition to the request during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July fourteenth. This is the notification boundary for that request. The property is currently undeveloped with access via Rose Garden Loop. Property also has access via private access easement from East Central Texas Expressway through an existing nursing home facility to the west. However, the property does not have direct access from either Rose Garden, Rosewood Drive or East Central Texas Expressway. And so based on the limited access, staff finds that the subject property is not well-suited for commercial development, and we are therefore recommending approval of the request to amend the future land use map from regional commercial to residential mix as requested by the applicant. At the regular meeting on July fourteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of four to two. Commissioners Sabri and Pierrefoy voted in opposition to the motion, citing citizens' concern regarding traffic and management of the existing homeowners' association.
Thank you. Mr. Kager has some questions. And I want to go direct. Thank you. All right. Did this project come to us, the development, two years ago? Did this project come to us, the development, two years ago, three years, when it was brought to us to develop that area?
The Rosewood Springs PUD was developed in, I believe, 2018 or 2019.
Okay. And the staff approved it?
Staff's recommendation at that time, I believe, was for approval of the PUD. Yes.
And now I'm hearing that there's a regional commercial property that cannot be used for commercial property.
There's, there's an area that is owned by the developer that was designated on our, on our comprehensive plan as commercial.
And you approved it? Staff did?
No, ma'am. It was not included in the PUD boundary. So the Rosewood Springs PUD boundary was rezoned and staff recommended approval of that item at that time. This was outside the boundary. It was designated for commercial. As I said, it's, it's not viable in, in staff's opinion for commercial development. So they're coming forward at this time and requesting to change the future land use map designation from commercial to residential.
But someone, maybe not you, but someone said this area was good for commercial, correct?
That was, that designation occurred as part of the comprehensive plan, so that was.
Okay, we can go with that. So how many residents was against this? And while I'm interested, staff, I mean, not you per se, Ms. Messer. Counsel, I was a council member of this area where I petitioned this to the residents that it would be developed a certain way. And, and that area was for commercial. I assumed that, maybe I misunderstood that. And now we're just trying to add more houses over there. Staff is agreeing to, I agree, it falls within that. But that area is packed with traffic. It's ridiculous over there. And I go there, go through that area a lot headed to meetings. So that's my only concern. I just think we have, just my recommendation, until we can do better with our, our infrastructure over there, in that area, I am pro-pro development. But I know we have said, not at this time, to other people that wanted to develop. And that's my concern with, we know that the traffic in the area and stuff, it's just terrible over there. I know y'all may not live in that. And Mr. Kegel, you go through that. Wait a minute, Councilman Solomon, you live over there. How is the traffic? And we add more development over there. You don't have to answer if you don't want to.
I do want to answer. I think that it's not only the traffic, it's just the way that, I mean, what that property is facing. I actually went out there, actually it's adjacent to that whole property area, that whole development is facing. And I was there at those meetings four years ago, three years ago, and how that a lot of the residents oppose. And, and they said it was going to be one thing and it turned out to be totally different, totally different. And it made a lot of promises, developed, made a lot of promises, but it's nothing like what it was said it would be. And so, yes, Madam Mayor, I think the traffic would, it's enough traffic. And the way it's designed, because you can, you come out a certain way, but if you, it's really, to get on Rosewood, it's really hard.
It's very hard.
To get into that area, you have to, if you miss the first turn, you, you have to come down and go around. And so it's really difficult. So, I mean, me, I, I do not, I know we are in the public hearing and presentation of this, but when we get down further, I am not for this.
Right. It's that crossover when you get ready to turn and trying to come out, you can go over.
Yes.
So I, I support staff, Mr. Kegel, because I want to make sure, I don't want to offend one of your executive directors. So I wanted to say this to you. I support staff. But I just think right now, this is my recommendation to counsel, not right now. That, that area is still, we're going to be doing construction on the roadway over there if we ever get funding for it. If we go on Stagecoach Rosewood area, we're going to be working on that. I, I just think right now is just not the opportunity to develop, knowing that we getting ready to do construction, knowing that we already hearing from residents that are complaining about the roadway is destroyed and construction, that's just adding more problems in that area for congestion. That's just my recommendation. It's still left up to counsel. But, um, thank you. And that's, that's why I didn't want to go directly to you, because you followed the rules.
No offense taken.
But I do know in the past, we have heard, just not right now. And I'm okay with that. I'm not saying what you did was wrong. You followed the rules. But I just don't think right now is, is a good time. And that's my recommendation. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Solomon and Mr. Kegel. Thank you for being a lend in here. Just listen. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH 25046, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by John Gilmore on behalf of Key Supson and Sun Sun Son, case number Z25-21, to rezone approximately 0.67 acres being part of Lot 1, Block 1, out of the Cheney addition from R1 Single Family Residential District to B5 Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 3413 Old Farm to Market 440, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you so much, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Messer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This item is a request to rezone approximately 0.6 acres from R1 to B5. The eastern half of the parcel is currently zoned B5 and the western half is currently zoned R1. The applicant's intent, if approved, is to rezone the western portion of the lot to B5 in order to make the zoning consistent across the entire lot. Rezoning the entire parcel to B5 will allow for future commercial development of the lot. Property is located within the neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and designated resident, regional commercial on the future land use map. Red star on your screen indicates the location of the property. This is an aerial of the property. The area highlighted in pink is the boundary of the request. As you can see, the, it's a split zoning, so the property to, within the parcel to the east is already zoned B5. This is an exhibit showing the current zoning of these properties. This is a view of the subject property from old FM 440 facing west. View of the subject property facing east across old FM 440. View of the subject property facing south and facing north. We've notified the owners of 28 surrounding properties and we have received zero written responses in opposition to the request. This is a notification boundary. Staff finds that the applicant's request is consistent with the future land use map and with the recommendations outlined in the comprehensive plan and we are therefore recommending approval of the request as presented. Their meeting on July 14th, the Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of six to zero.
Yes, ma'am. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
PH 25047, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Mitchell and Associates, Inc. on behalf of Hawn Investments LLC, case number Z25-22, to rezone approximately 0.95 acres out of a 2.358 acre tract in the A Dixon survey, abstract number 266, from R1 Single Family Residential District to B3 Local Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 554 58th Street, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you. Mrs. Messer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This item is a request to rezone just over two acres from B3. I'm sorry, from R1 to B3. The northern half of the parcel is currently zoned R1 and the southern half of the lot is currently zoned B5. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 0.95 acres from R1 to B3. And if approved, the applicant intends to develop a food truck park on the property. The property is located within the neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and designated residential mix on the future land use map. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial. The area highlighted in pink is requested to be rezoned. This is an exhibit showing the current zoning of the area. View of the subject property from 58th Street facing east. View from the subject property facing west. View from the subject property facing north on 58th Street. And a view from the subject property facing south on 58th Street. We notified 49 surrounding properties regarding this request and to date, we've received no responses. This is the notification boundary. If approved, the requested B3 zoning designation will allow for a variety of neighborhood commercial uses, including retail, restaurants, offices, personal service establishments, gas stations, convenience stores, banks, oil and lube stations, auto parts sales, many self-storage facilities and other commercial uses. Staff finds that approval of the requests will allow for commercial development of the entire parcel while also ensuring that the proposed development is compatible with the existing single-family development to the north and west. We are therefore recommending approval of the applicant's request as presented. And the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you. I think you did an excellent job. This area need to have commercial development. Great job on that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
PH 25048, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Mitchell and Associates, Inc. on behalf of Colleen Summit Builders LLC, case number Z25-23, to rezone approximately 6.7 acres being lots 14 through 23, block 7, lots 13 through 30, block 8, out of Morris subdivision phase 2 from R2 Two Family Residential District to SF2 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 1101 through 1108, 1110, 1201 through 1206, and 1301 through 1306 Nina Drive, 1102 and 2304, 23, excuse me, 3204, 3206, 3208, 3210, 3212, 3214 and 3216 Ricks Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Mrs. Messer.
Thank you. This item is a request to rezone approximately 6.7 acres from its existing R2 designation to SF2 Single Family Residential. The applicant has submitted a request to rezone 28 existing lots, as I said, from R2 to SF2. If approved, the applicant intends to develop the property into single-family homes with a minimum lot size of, a minimum lot width of 50 feet. Subject properties are located within the neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and designated residential mix on the future land use map. The red star indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the subject properties. As you can see, they're existing platted lots that were never developed. The street is also not developed. These are all currently zoned R2 and the intent is to rezone them to SF2 for single-family use and complete construction of the street and develop those homes. View of the subject property from Janus Drive facing east. View of the subject property facing west across Janus Drive. View facing north and facing south. We notified 95 surrounding property owners regarding this request and we've received two written responses in support. This is the notification boundary for this request. Staff finds that the request is, aligns, what does align with the residential mix designation outlined on the comp plan and staff is of the determination that the proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses. We are therefore recommending approval of the request as presented. And the Planning, Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you. There are no questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH 25049, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Amir A. Abdalazim on behalf of Abdalazim Family Revocable Trust, case number Z25-24, to rezone approximately 0.19 acres being Lot 11, Block 1, out of the Bel Air Edition, Section 1, from B1 Professional Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 909 Bel Air Drive, Colleen, Texas.
Madam, Mrs., thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Messer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a request to rezone an existing lot from its current B1 zoning designation to R1 Single Family. The subject property was rezoned by the applicant in 2016 from R1 to B1 for use as a commercial office. The applicant's intent is to sell the property for use as a residence and therefore the request is to rezone the subject property back to its original R1 designation. Property is located within the neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and designated residential mix on the future land use map. Red star indicates the location of the property. This is an aerial of the property. As you can see, it's, there's an existing lot that's developed. It was at one point a house was converted to an office and the intent is to convert it back into a single-family residence. This is a view of the property from Bel Air Drive facing north. View of the subject property facing south. Sorry, view from the subject property facing south. View from the subject property facing east and facing west. We notified 36 surrounding property owners and to date, we have received one written response in support. There were two citizens who spoke in support of the request during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July 14th. This is the notification boundary. The red star here indicates property owner in, in support. Staff finds that the R1 zoning, the requested R1 zoning is consistent with the adjacent single-family development and consistent with the comp plan. We are therefore recommending approval of the request as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval by a unanimous vote.
Thank you. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
PH 25050, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending Colleen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 31, zoning by amending the zoning amendment approval requirements, providing for additional signage and public hearing notification requirements, amending home occupation regulations, providing for multifamily and mixed uses in business districts, and providing for small lot regulations.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This one right here, you know, Mr. Kegel, know my feelings on this, but this is going to be interesting. Mrs. Messer.
Mayor and Council, this is a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances. As you know, during their 89th regular session, the Texas Legislature passed several bills into law that will affect the city's zoning and land use regulations. Notably, Senate Bill 840 addresses mixed use in multifamily and commercial areas. Senate Bill 15 addresses single-family density. And House Bill 24 addresses zoning amendment notification requirements and protest requirements. These will all become effective on September 1st of this year. The proposed amendments to Chapter 31 are intended to address these changes made by the legislature to the local government code. We are proposing several amendments to Chapter 31 to address the changes that were made by the Texas Legislature. Regarding notification and protests and notification signage, we are proposing to add a section regarding signage that would require the applicant to be responsible for erecting a sign on the property of a requested zoning change. House Bill 24 mandates that the sign must be at least 24 inches by 48 inches and must be erected at least 10 days before the date of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So the new legislation does allow the city to place that responsibility on the requester of the zoning change. So we are proposing to include that in, in the code. Requirements regarding color, font size, et cetera of the sign will be in accordance with standards that are promulgated by the planning department. We're also proposing to add a section requiring notice of all public hearings related to zoning regulations and zoning district boundaries to be posted on the city's website at least 15 days before the public hearing. This is a requirement that was included in House Bill 24. We are recommending amending the protest requirements to align with the newly amended section 211.0061 of the local government code. This would include removing the three-fourth majority affirmative vote needed for approval of a request that has been recommended for disapproval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This change is recommended due to the provision having been repealed by House Bill 24. Regarding home occupations, we're recommending amending the home occupation standards to state that the total number of employees and clients or patrons of the business shall not at any time exceed the maximum occupancy of the building or property. Again, this change is due to. Again, this change is due to adoption of House Bill 2464. Regarding multifamily and mixed-use residential development, we are recommending amending the use regulations in all commercial or business districts to allow for multifamily residential and mixed-use residential uses. This change is needed to comply with Senate Bill 840. Residential uses in commercial zoning districts are limited to those areas not located within 3,000 feet of an airport or military base, in accordance with Senate Bill 840. Bless you. The proposed ordinance defines multifamily residential as providing for at least three dwelling units per building, and it also defines mixed-use residential as being vertical mixed-use comprised of residential and non-residential uses in the same building on the same lot. This is our proposal, the recommended changes in our proposed ordinance. On the map, on the screen is a, is a map that shows the areas that are impacted by Senate Bill 840. So you can see here, this is primarily our commercial zoning districts. Regarding small lots, we are recommending adding a section to Chapter 31 that would address small lots, which are defined as residential lots, a residential lot that is 4,000 square feet or less. Section regarding small lots applies only to properties meeting the criteria outlined in Local Government Code, Section 211.052, which states that the property will be platted and located in an area zoned for single-family homes, must be five acres or more, have no recorded plat, and not be located within 3,000 feet of an airport or military base. This map indicates those areas that are impacted by Senate Bill 15. So again, these are properties intended for residential development, unplatted, and not within 3,000 feet of an airport or military base. To mitigate the impact of Senate Bill 15 on the character and density of new residential development, staff is proposing to amend Chapter 31 to require that all single-family lots less than 50 feet in width be alley-loaded. So, on the screen are examples of the types of small lot development that would be allowed under the proposed amendments. So you can see, these are narrow lots that are, that have alleys in the rear, so they don't have forward-facing garages. This is another example of the types of single-family development that would be allowed under the small lot provisions, and what those might look like from the back. Again, types of development that would be allowed. And these are examples of the types of single-family development that would not be allowed under this proposed small lot provisions. So, with the proposed standards, we are including provisions regarding lot size and setbacks, impermeable surface, architectural elements, and off-street parking and access. As dictated by Senate Bill 15, the minimum lot standards for small lots are minimum 3,000 square feet in area, minimum lot width of 30 feet, minimum lot depth of 75, 15-foot front yard setback, 5-foot side yard setbacks, and a 10-foot rear yard setback. We're also including, as I said, provisions regarding impermeable surface. In this case, it states that impermeable surfaces shall not exceed 70% of the lot area. With regard to the architectural standards, as you know, we spent a lot of time working through the architectural standards with the narrowness of, of these small lot homes. We felt that it would be challenging to incorporate the, the standard, single-family architectural standards, so we've just prescribed that they must include enhanced windows, meaning that windows in the front elevation shall incorporate at least one window enhancement, including transom bay windows, shutters, dormers, et cetera. A covered front entry of at least 40 square feet in area, and included a repetition standard stating that homes of the same elevation should not be placed within two lots on the same side of the street or directly across the street from one another. With regard to off-street parking, the small lot provisions state that small lots must contain at least one off-street parking space per residential unit. For small lots less than 50 feet in width, the parking space or garage shall be accessed from the rear, the rear of the lot via an alley. So, staff finds that the proposed amendments to Chapter 31 are necessary to comply with state law and to ensure that new development is compatible with the character of the surrounding area. We are therefore recommending approval of the ordinance as presented. During a special meeting on August 5th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposed ordinance by a vote of 5 to 1, with Commissioner Pierrefoy voting in opposition. He noted concerns regarding the, the fact that the proposed ordinance does not solve affordability. He also expressed concern that small lot, single-family homes are likely to be owned by companies rather than individual homeowners.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Mesher, as always, you do a great job. Now, this is, this is not towards you, Mr. Kegel. Here go my, here go my concerns. I'm really big on tiny homes. I believe if I'm buying a home or R1, I have different options, I have different plans, and I think the residence, and I think it should be affordability, because I work with, as I stated before, council, and this is to the council, not to Mr. Kegel or Ms. Mesher. My opinion, I work with Fort Cabosos, and I tell you that we have soldiers of all ranks, and it's about affordability. Me personally, I do not like the alley. If you go to the military, and this is why to share with Mr. Kegel, you did a great job, it's not against you. I just don't like that style. We have them in the military, they park in the back. My biggest thing I discussed with Mr. Kegel was safety. If we're not going to put a light in the back, and I have no neighbors watching me when I get out my car, because all I got is the alley. And Mr. Kegel had some vital, vital points that, well, I'm not going to share it, but I, I'm still a big fan, coming from a military background, staying in those types of homes, I, I don't like them. But, me being who I am, I like compromise. I don't have a problem with us going with that. But I do think residents that may have an income for a tiny home, which is affordability. I am even open up to doing a PUD. I just think, the word I want to use, because I don't want to take away from you, we have a great working relationship, and you do work hard, you and your team, but I think the word should be options. And that is just my opinion to the council, that's just, oh shit, make it one way across the board, give options. That's just me with that. And we have no other questions, just me. Up, Mr. Kegel.
Well, Mayor, the state didn't give us any options, and, and these aren't tiny homes. The, I mean, I guess it depends on your point of view.
Oh, no, 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 I want tiny homes. I'm not saying they are. I'm coming to you.
Okay.
I said if we were given options, your, your recommendation was an alley, a home with the garage in the back, correct, Ms. Mesher?
Well, let me, we're not talking about tiny homes here. The, these are, these are small lots. Okay.
I do understand we're not talking about that. And that is your recommendation to have a small lot with the garage in the alley, the garage in the back, am I right?
Yes, ma'am. If, if I may.
Yes, please.
What the, what the legislature did was that they dictated that cities of a certain size, which we fall into, into that category, must allow homes with, on 30-foot lots in any area that falls under that category. So on, on your, on the screen is a map indicating anywhere that, that these small lots must be allowed regardless of our zoning ordinance, so.
Yes, ma'am. I take tiny lots back. I take tiny homes back. Even if it's the size of the house that you have, that you want to build, if we want to go there, I was just being nice, let's do it this way. You want them in the back, I don't believe garages direct should be in the back. I think it's a safety. I don't like it. I think whoever building, and if a resident is going to purchase a home, they should have options. I think that's as direct as you want to. So we can throw tiny homes out. I don't want it.
If I may, the proposed ordinance, the, the alley requirement only applies to those lots less than 50 feet in width. So if you are a home builder or developer proposing to do 50, 60, or 70-foot lots, they don't have to be alley-loaded. It's only for those lots smaller than 50 feet, so that your 40-foot or your 45-foot lots would have to be alley-loaded. And, the proposed ordinance does not preclude the possibility of a PUD. So.
Yes, ma'am.
With the proposed ordinance, by right, a developer in these locations could do 40-foot lots that are alley-loaded, 30-foot lots that are alley-loaded, 60-foot lots that are not alley-loaded, or they could still do a PUD. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. And we did have those conversations, Mr. Kegel and I, but I still think people need options. I still stand with that. Councilwoman Gonzalez, thank you. None towards you. I believe in options. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, madam. So I understand that Senate Bill 15 kind of put us in this position that we are in today. Just to be clear, do we have an abundance of these 30-foot, 40-foot home requests right now, as it stands?
Not currently.
Are we dealing with an abundance of these being developed?
Well, they're, they're not even allowed in the city right now.
Correct. That was my question for people that did not know. Thank you. Thank you. And so, when we're looking at the, can you pull up the picture of the row homes with the garages in the front? It's, um, right, no. That, I don't know, with the cars and the parking spaces.
There we go. These, to be clear, don't have garages, they have parking spaces in front.
And so, under the provision that we are speaking of, this would not be permitted either?
Correct. Under, under the proposed ordinance, the, any lot less than 50 feet in width, again, would have to have the required off-street parking space in the back, via, access via an alley.
And, and then in that alley space as well, would those, would there be a requirement for those garage spaces to be caddy, or is there any type of requirement for management of those as far as not them being one-on-one?
There's nothing contemplated in, in the proposed ordinance regarding.
The spacing or layout of the lots. And then, to the Madam Mayor's point with the additional lighting, I've driven through a couple of different communities that have them. Obviously, if you travel, there's other areas, it seems like it was older, it was pretty common back in the day, in certain areas, but the lighting, for me, was probably the biggest concern that I had, to ensure that, I know that there's standard that's already set, but having those additional lightings, how would that work in those particular areas for added security? Is that something that we would regulate, or would it be something that the development would have to incorporate as part of those developments?
So, we currently don't regulate lighting on single-family homes in general, so the developer is free to, to add lighting. Homes often have coach lights on the front and security lighting in the back. The proposed ordinance doesn't include a mandate for lighting. I will say that the, our streetlight requirements would call for a, a streetlight on the, on either end of an alley where it intersects with a public street. And then beyond that, lighting within the alley would be provided on the backs of the homes.
Now, there's some areas in town that I don't know if, that I've seen where it's really cluttered. It gets real close, I'm looking at this picture, it gets really cluttered, so if there's no, there has to be a mandate of one off-street parking at the front or at the back. Something like the four-plex areas that we have across the town that are those older develop, those get really cluttered really quick. So how, are you saying that the recommendation for the alley load is to help prevent that from happening, as we can see in certain areas like Canterbury and, and those areas across town?
So, a couple of things. One, you'll recall when we worked on the architectural standards, we had a lot of discussion about forward-facing garage doors and the impact that that has on the, the character of an area, on the walkability, on the, the pedestrian environment and the pedestrian experience. So, the first thing that it does is it, it requires anything with a garage that, again, is on a lot less than 50 feet, to have, have that garage in the back. It also requires the off-street parking space, whether that's a garage or just a driveway, to also be in the back. So in this case, you can see this, these homes are provided with essentially a parking space in front, whereas in the examples that I showed at the beginning, these have narrow walkways and landscaping in the front, so when you drive through the neighborhood, the pedestrian experience is, is vastly different, because there isn't that clutter that you mentioned, there aren't cars parked in front, they're all in the rear.
And when our state legislator decided to make this mandate for us, is this, was an idea of creating more affordable opportunities for housing? Is that what the, what the intended, do we know what their intention was?
It's my understanding that, that was the intent, was to allow for smaller, smaller lots, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then they set a deadline for us, September 1. Was that deadline to have an ordinance in place by September 1?
The legislation goes into effect on September 1. So the intent here tonight is to have an ordinance in place prior to this new legislation going into effect that would address this type of development.
Okay. And then on Senate Bill 840, can you just confirm what exactly that means with the mixed use and commercial? Are you able or not able to have mixed use? Can you explain?
Yes, ma'am. So, Senate Bill 840 allows for mixed use and multifamily in any commercial zoning area, essentially. So, where we typically see, commercial zoning districts have commercial uses and residential zoning districts have residential uses, this will allow for residential uses, meaning multifamily and mixed use. And in this case, multifamily is anything three units and above in an existing commercially zoning district. So, a property owner that has a property zone, say, B3, could come in and develop three plexes or four plexes on that property by right under the new state, new state law.
Thank you. Mrs., thank you. Mrs. Mesher, I'm not saying what you're proposing is wrong, no. I said, keep that, but give other options. That is what I'm saying. I don't have a problem in what you're saying, but I also think there should be other options, just like we do any other design plan for R1. We give people options. The city set the standard, but then you have other plans they can choose from. And I don't see, just by, I can only speak, maybe I'm missing it. If you go, and, and I'm not going to use the military, but I'm going to use an alley as general. And I went and visited Chicago, was up there for a summer, and also in Milwaukee. And if you have an alley in the back, are we laying the infrastructure for that, or is that the developer?
Developers always put in the, the infrastructure.
So, how's that going to be affordable? Because somebody got to take that cost. And then if we, we put in the ordinance, because I think safety is a big deal, when you want people to park in the back, and if we say, light, then they got to pay for that too. Mr. Zager, come on up here and tell me how you make that cost effective. Come on up here and talk to me, how you doing?
So, I am familiar with a lot of these type of developments. Typically, the alley is used for access to the properties. It's used by the residents, access to the driveway, access to the garages, pedestrian access. It kind of is a community type of thing. It's, the alleys aren't intended to be the major road, so the general public, the general traffic, is not intended to drive down the alleys. The garbage deliveries usually go through there, any of those sort of items. If, you know, if electric, like, in the picture here, you could see that there are utilities that are with, like this picture, you see a 20-foot alley, which is all concrete, and that is our standard. So all it is, is just a concrete asphalt, it is a roadway from property line to property line. And then you'd have, in this case, there's a utilities meant where you can have power, cable, any of the underground utilities. Water sewer typically is still on the main street, it's going to be in the front. So where the house is in the front, that's where you'll see your water and your sewer lines. Those are the main public utility, the public roadways that at least we would be using, or public works would be using to access all that. The other thing that probably take into consideration, the one main reason you don't have driveways in the front of these type of homes, is then you eliminate street parking. So, a typical parking spot is 20 feet long, or a car is. So if you have a 30-foot lot, and you have to have a minimum of a 10-foot driveway with the flares, you're five foot on each side, at least from the property line offset, you only have about 10 feet, 10 to 15 feet of available space to put a parking spot, unless the developer can kind of coordinate it. So you eliminate a lot of off-street parking when you, you know, try to have driveways on a small lot like this. That's why I believe we're emphasizing to go in that rear alley type of access for garages, so it makes better use of the front of the house.
So you're saying this type of.
So you're saying this type of recommend, you're saying this type of recommendation. How many people can come visit?
Um, how many people? I mean, we're, it's a matter of where can they park? They can't park in the alley. They're going to park in the front of the house. So you have to have parking spots. If you have driveways, then no one could park there.
And my last question to you, I noticed the big picture. Would you go to the big picture with the garage in front of it, which was terrible, by the way? Are you saying, Mr., either one of you can answer? Oh, no. Oh, yes, that was it. Are you telling me, from your professional opinion, that a garage cannot be on the side on a small lot or somewhere that there's, there's no better way to build other than that? There's no more pictures that, because some.
So, so a car is 10-foot wide?
No, my question, that's not my question.
Okay.
My question is, there is virtually, I'm asking you, it's just yes to no to me. That's the only way, if there was another option, I'm not for alleys, period. And if there, if I'm wasting my time saying there's options, I need to know. Is this the only way you can build on that size lot? Because if it's 40, it's got to be 30-foot on the 30. This is the only way you can build it? Yes or no?
No.
Okay, that's, that's it. Okay. Councilmember Solomon? They answered the question? Oh, okay, that's what you had. Oh, you coming back. Council, Mr., and I'm not barking. I just, I believe in options. I've been clear about, I do not like alleys. It's not safe. And if the city is not going to pay for the light, why do it? I mean, don't take it away. You can keep that, but give other options. That's all I ask for. Mr. K.
Well, Mayor, I think what they were trying to say is either the garage is front-facing or rear-facing. On lots this small, you can't get a side-entry garage in. It doesn't, mathematically, it doesn't fit.
That's my question. Is this the only way? Did you say no?
No, I think there are lots of other ways that you could develop on a small lot. To be clear, these are, these are narrower than 30 feet. These are, these are very narrow lots. However, if, if, in order to comply with the off-street parking requirement, the parking, the off-street parking has to go somewhere. So the question is, does it go in the front or does it go in the back? For many home, or many, many home builders wish to provide a garage. So what we're saying is that if you're going to provide a garage, that garage must be in the rear rather than being forward-facing, because when, when you have a forward-facing garage on a very narrow lot, this is, this is the type of development that you can expect. So if, if there's going to be a garage, what we're saying is that it should face the rear so that it doesn't clutter the front.
This is not a, I'm trying to understand. You, you put this picture here. Why? I, I was trying to understand. Why?
This is, this is merely an example of a small lot development with a forward-facing garage.
And what size lot is this?
I believe these are 25.
Do we even have a picture of one 30 that would fit the requirements of state?
No, ma'am. I wasn't able to find an example of, of, something I could assure was exactly 30 feet. But this is the type of, of homes that you'll see on, on very narrow lots.
Okay. Mr. K, anything else?
Yes, ma'am. So, so the options are on lots this small, a front-facing garage or rear-facing. I suppose you could raise, like you, you see in coastlines, you could raise the house up and park under it. But are, the reason we propose this, what the state told us, we're, you're going to allow these types of lots. And we know exactly what we're going to get if we don't put some requirements on it.
What would you get? That picture right there?
Very similar to that.
Okay.
So, look, Ms. Gonzalez made a good point. You can build an awesome neighborhood with, with four plexes, quadruplexes. It can, it can be great. It's a great style of development. But what happened here in Colleen was not. You get the front of all concrete. You get metal steps and, um, so the same thing can happen here if we don't take some care. We're going to get styles of development that 15 years from now, people are going to be asking, why did they allow this? That's what we're trying to let you know. And I use that example because that's what people say now about a lot of the four-plex development that we have. There is a way to do four plexes. You can build a beautiful neighborhood without a lot of additional cost. Same thing with small lot development.
Mrs. Mesher, are you telling me that my options, I don't have options there?
No, ma'am. What, what I think Mr. K was trying to say.
I'm sorry. Are you saying, no, I don't have option? Uh, no, ma'am, I'm not saying that.
I think this ordinance does allow for options. I think in some ways it allows for, for more options than what we have currently on the books. So the state has mandated 30-foot lots, right? So what we're saying is that in response to that, we're still allowing 30-foot lots, but we're saying that they should be, have a, have a, a better character than what we think we, we can expect to see if development occurs with 30-foot lots that have forward-facing garages.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think, I think the ordinance actually allows for, for more options, to answer your question.
Councilman, oh, it's going to be you and me going back.
I'm sorry. Just, I just wanted to add some clarity. There's. You, without some sort of ordinance, you're going to get one type of development. With this proposal, if the developer comes in and does not want to do the rear-entry lots, they can propose a PUD. We can't require a PUD for these size of lots. But if they can propose something to y'all that says, hey, this solves the concerns and we think we can do this without rear-entry, and here's how we're going to do it, and here's how we're going to deal with these problems, we're all ears. The staff's not at all opposed to density. It's, we're very concerned about density done wrong. And so I, I think what Ms. Mesher was saying, if we just go with the state law, you're going to get one option and that's it. And what we tried to propose was to allow some flexibility and to give the council some say in some of these, uh, small lot developments.
Yes, sir. Mr. K, I'm not against that. I'm really not against what she's saying. I just used the word option. I'm not, we can have that and something else. The PUD, I did say PUD. I'm for that too. So I'm not just totally against anything. I'm, I'm just giving an opinion. Councilman Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted to ask, have we given this proposal ordinance, have we talked to any of the developers about this? If we get a feeling of?
We had a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have not had any stakeholder meetings. And the reason for that is due to the, the short timeline. As I mentioned, this ordinance, this legislation goes into effect on September 1st. So given, given the, the short timeline that we have to get something in place, we did not have robust stakeholder meetings.
So we didn't inquire them at all, telephonically, just say, hey, we are thinking about this?
I've had several conversations with, with developers over the past several weeks.
Okay. And what was their response?
By and large, the developers don't.
I'm just curious. I mean, it may be.
Want to see this. Have I had conversations with citizens or people who, who actually live in the neighborhoods in Colleen about this proposed ordinance? I haven't had the opportunity to have those conversations.
And so if we, another question I have, if we, if we have garages that are in the back and you have a family that have two vehicles and that garage only fits one vehicle, where would the other vehicle be at?
On-street parking would be provided in the street.
So it would be allowed on the street?
So to, to Mr. Zager's point a little while ago, um, again, the concern with these narrow lots, if you have a, say, a 10-foot driveway and a 30-foot lot, most of the on-street parking is eaten up by driveway. By moving the driveway to the rear of the lot, it frees up the entire.
Yes, ma'am.
Street frontage for on-street parking.
Right. And I was just curious how it would look, because you have, most of your families now have two vehicles. And then, then you have visitors coming over. So I don't know if that's, it's going to really eliminate a lot of the parking on the street.
So in this case, you can see, this is an example of alley-loaded homes. You can barely see, but down here is a street parked, a car parked on the street. So essentially, the entire length of, of this picture has on-street parking in the front as well as off-street parking in the rear.
Yes, ma'am. Got you. And, and you know, I'm, I'm just like, I'm all for options as well. I have seen it in Colleen where we have neighborhoods that the vehicles, it's just, they're all over the place and it's just a huge clutter, but they have to have their vehicles.
Right. So to, to be clear, in this picture, again, this, these are homes that are alley-loaded. So there is no front-facing driveway or garage. There's on-street parking in the front and off-street parking in the rear, both garage, just garage, but off-street parking in the rear.
I see.
In this example here, what you have is essentially one paved parking space in front of each home and no opportunity for on-street parking. So arguably, this has less opportunity for parking than an alley.
Got you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it feels like we are beating a dead horse. We haven't even heard from folks who came here to speak on this. You know, it's, it almost seems like we have our minds made up. To me, it's, developers foot the bill for whatever it is that they build. You know, if they choose to build something that can only house one car, I mean, that's their problem. If it doesn't sell, who's taking the risk? The developer's taking the risk. The city's not taking the risk. We're not footing any money for it. If they want to build something that whoever's going to buy it can only park one car or two bicycles, you know, that's up to the person who's buying it. I would assume that they would do their due diligence before they purchase it and see that, hey, I'm not going to be able to have, uh, the Last Supper at my house this year because I can't fit everybody. So, um, you know, I would like to wait and reserve the rest of my own comments until we hear from the public and, and see what their concerns are. And then hopefully, we can move forward and find a happy medium that works with everybody. Like you said, the, the state and the governor signed this into law and it takes effect September 1. So we do have a short window to, to address any concerns. But that doesn't mean whatever we decide today is set in stone has these, as this product starts to develop, if it ever starts to develop here, and then we see, hey, look, this is not working, or this is working, or this needs to change, then you go through and you make a change to it. So I, I don't see the huge sense of concern. And, and again, I'll, I'll reserve the rest of my comments till after the citizen comments have gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. But I want the council to know that every individual comment is important. The resident voted you in to be in the seat. This item must be voted on tonight. And if it takes 10 minutes or an hour for you to ask your questions to get a clarity, I would pray you to, even though the residents will speak, but if you, they can speak, but if you don't understand what is coming, what the staff is saying, you're still going to be still at square one you don't understand. So I don't ever want you to be hesitant to speak or ask questions. You deserve that right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Mesher. Madam Secretary, that was our last item. Council, before we go into break, we're going to get to the citizens, because we don't have that many to speak. And we're going to give them the opportunity. And then we, if residents or anybody else in the audience, if it's a citizen comment, it has to be turned in prior. So this would not go, because you have to turn it in prior. And that's one of our governor's standards and expectations, that all citizen comments must be turned in prior to the council meeting. We're going to call Mr. George Spears. Is he here, George Spears, sir? Sir? Okay, thank you. The next person we have is Mr. Sean, Sean Price. You have three minutes. Are you here, Sean Price? While he's coming, if you would like to speak on a public hearing item, you can still sign up for that now, but not for citizen comments. Mr. Price, uh, thank you, Mr. K. A good evening, Mr. Price. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, City Council. Yeah, the PR 25, 021, I'm not necessarily sure what the purpose of that is. I think it's to gain money from City of Colleen for something that we've already spent money on, right? As the mayor said and as Councilmember Cigar said, there wasn't really any meat there other than, hey, pick me. So, um, there's a, there's one thing about that, though, that, uh, he was voted in as a Democrat mayor. And he is a registered Democrat representative, not a Republican, just so everybody understands that. RS. 25, 129. I'm just wondering how it was missed in the original, um, plans, right? So if we had to add this pipe, right, why wasn't it done in the beginning? Why wouldn't it know? Why, what was the oops in this matter for $82,000? So that's just my question. You know, how did we miss it? Because we're already doing the upgrade, so why are we missing something that we should know to do in the first place? 25, 130. Again, what happened in the beginning, in order to cause this excess cost of $86,542 in materials, right? When they go through and they find out that they have all these areas, the estimates and stuff like that, why was it this amount? Why wasn't it less? So how accurate was the actual plan to do the job in the first place? Doesn't seem to be very accurate to me. So I'm wondering how we lost the accuracy or what was the exchange, because we only have so many schools. So it's not that hard to figure out how much material we need. So I'm just misunderstanding. If somebody can tell me, that would be great. For RS 25, 132, the lobbyists, we're paying for lobbyists to do, to, to represent us when we have two representatives that go down there and speak for us in the first place? Why are we paying these people $8,333.33 a month to do the job that we already have two people elected to go down there and do? Not sure why we're doing that, but somebody's not doing their job. That's just my opinion. And, uh, it, now, is the budget part of this, RS, or are we doing the budget, uh, public hearing separately? Okay. Well, I'm out of time. I'll wait until we get to the public hearing on the, on the budget. Because I'm already listening for that.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Juanita, you have an item, but your item is actually a public hearing item. Yeah.
I'm not familiar with council stuff.
Yes, ma'am. That's why I'm taking my time to explain. I'm going to call you, but you put citizen comments. But I will call you on that specific item. But I just didn't want you to think I overlooked you because you had citizen comments at the top.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Melissa Brown, you have three minutes. And Council, while she's coming, if y'all don't want to take a break, we can continue. Or you can, want to take a break, we can, keep going? All right. Uh, Madam Secretary, you okay with that? Okay. Thank you. So you have three minutes.
I understand the timing of expanding the water line from Featherline to WS Young. It only makes sense to expand that while Stagecoach is already torn up and being replaced. What I don't understand is why we are considering this part of Featherline improvements. As Mr. Zager said, this is a separate line and intended to, for future growth. This doesn't even benefit residents along Featherline Road. This shouldn't be, or this should be primarily funded by impact fees. This was not on a project that was included in any of the bond presentations, requests, or packages. Not even the $32 million, or I'm sorry, $37.5 million revenue bond for water and sewer. This isn't in there. So if we take $82,173.76 out of that 37.5 million that was accounted for for all the. So, if we take $82,173.76 out of that $37.5 million that was accounted for for all the projects, what project suffers and gets removed or gets delayed? We should take $41,000 out of the $1,025,000 that we have in impact fees, and then the remaining $41,000 should come out of a CIP fund balance, should not be an amendment to Featherline Road, which is a quarter of a mile away from WS Young. It has nothing to do with Featherline Road other than a connection. That's not $82,000 worth of sitting down and adjusting something that you're already in the process of doing. So, let's talk about, real quick, KEDC, several projects, a lot that we've already heard about over and over again, businesses relocating, Dongjing's talking about hiring 12 new people, but with new jobs from our local talent pool, and what does the average pay for these jobs? Did we end up having to offer additional job creation incentives? Wolf Tech Park, I mean, they asked us for a quarter of a million dollars to pay for the land and development out there, and they're advertising about Austin with no real plan to market the city of Colleen. I have plenty of ideas on how we can do that if anyone is actually willing to listen. The city council specifically voted to stop providing money to GKCC in 2019, 2020. KEDC is using the loophole to get around that, as the presentation demonstrated. City council directed KEDC to make a grocery store multiple ti, or grocery store priority multiple times, and they haven't. That's why the next item is here in regards to that. Mr. Sherman isn't offering anything more than what IBCC is offering. We're going to work with a consultant. We really need to go with a local option who is intimately familiar with the city and working in a military town, doesn't use state resources for personal gain, and IBCC wouldn't have competing interests. What is his cost? Because nobody asks that question. If the person is paying more in far as.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
May I have another moment from the council, please?
Councilmember Alvarez.
Surprise.
Excuse me. Thank you.
That's what you get for being rotten.
Councilwoman Solomon. It doesn't matter, that's just a distraction.
He's not a councilwoman.
I call him, please, can we stay focused? Don't let, that'll be the distraction. Yes or no? There's two no's. No. Thank you.
I would just.
Your time is up. Madam Secretary, next item, please. Madam Secretary, we're not taking a break, so we're going to continue to go on as we go through the meeting. All right, counsel? Madam Secretary, we're doing consent agenda items.
Yes, ma'am.
If you need a break, we can take one if you need, okay, thank you. All right, consent agenda items.
MN 25-021, MN 25-022, RS 25-128, RS 25-129, RS 25-130, RS 25-131, RS 25-132.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda? Councilman Solomon.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items.
Thank you. Councilmember Kendrick. Thank you. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carried, five to zero. For residents, because we're getting ready to go into public hearing, for residents that do not know the procedure, if one of your items come up that you want to speak on, please raise your hand if I do not call your name. You will have to go over and get a form and fill it out, but at least you have the opportunity to speak. So, if that item come up and I have not received a form from you, please, just raise your hand, and if I pass you, overlook you, it's not that I'm trying to, I just don't have your form, you can come up and speak, and then go over there and fill out your form. All right. So, counsel, bear with me, I have more forms, and I need to separate them, but I keep it going. For RS, which item? RS 25-43, public hearing, Madam Secretary. Well, if you're still working, I can wait till you finish.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem. The council is still in session. I have not taken a break.
I am ready, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
PH 25-043, hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2026 annual budget.
Thank you. Counsel, Mrs. Tang Lang has gone through the presentation. Would you like for her to go back through it? Okay. Public hearing is open. Sean Price, you have three minutes.
Am I correct in noting that, are we 297 million, over 297 million in debt, with a debt service of, from last year of $20 million to now $21,875,888, with an underfundsage of $690,817? I'm just in question, when I look at the data and I see the quotations next to it, Is that what we need to acquire still this year to pay, or for next year to cover up the debt? So, I'm just trying to understand all that fix in there. And then, I'm looking at Mr. Cagle's annual salary. It went from what I understand of $264,000 to $281,000. Is that correct? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Melissa Brown.
How about y'all have to be tired of just sitting there? Pretty disrespectful to the people who came out. A motion for a reduction, council travel budget on July 22nd was to reduce the allotment to $52,000, which was a unanimous vote. Right now, if you look at page 267 of the posted proposed budget, which you have to go all the way into the 240s, 50s before you start getting down to any actual details about what's going on in the budget, it still says that it's 100, that it's $15,000 per council member, $26,000 for the mayor. But also, as I stated two weeks ago, there was a motion of direction, which also passed unanimously, to fund IBCC $50,000 to be a consultant on finding a grocery store, not put it up for public debate, and see if there's money at the end of the year. Y'all passed the minutes that actually showed that that was the motion and the vote. Okay. It's made clear that an additional tax rate increase was for first responders and increasing staff salaries. A second ACM doesn't meet either of those, and none of the additional 1% COLA is even coming from the additional increase in taxes. So, this is all going to ones. $380,000 for just the first year for a second assistant city manager? For what? So, he doesn't have to interact with us as the citizens? This would actually make the city manager department's salary is a total of $822,125, not including benefits. It will also make their department car allowance $13,200. We gave a motion of direction in FY '22 to hire a grant writer, a position that would cost us less and get us more. Just in this proposed budget, James Kent Cagle told you he doesn't listen to you or us. We could get more sales tax, hotel tax, and positive press if the city didn't make assembly permits so difficult to get and make them more affordable. Lower costs with more people willing to pay will equate to more money. It's called a cost-profit analysis. I recommend that we take a look at that. For a second ACM, we could have a vet tech, a grant writer, and a permit tech, or we could also just get a cardiac monitor, or we can have a second ACM so we can have more $100,000-plus salaries in the city. By the way, who authorized the Lamar billboard for the Colleen PFC, and what is the investment income coming from? Because that's not one of those things where we said that the assistant secretary can go ahead and make financial decisions without coming to the board. There is nothing about that. So, y'all need to look at all the rest of the budget.
Your time is up.
But you're charging us too much.
Mr. Gary Persa, ma'am, your time is up. Mr. Gary Persa, you have three minutes, sir. Please come up. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Madam, City Council. Can we pull up the slide on the budget, maybe the first slide? Is that possible?
Counsel? Please stop the time. Somebody pull up, what slide? That is your first warning. You have not been recognized. Someone else have the floor. Melissa Brown, please stop disrupting the meeting. Mr. Persa, I apologize for the rudeness.
That one, that one.
That is your second warning. Mr. Persa, Ms. Brown?
Ms. Ness, I'm walking outside.
Mr. Persa, I am so apologize. She wants to get put out, and I just don't have the energy for that nonsense. Ms. Brown, bye. Mr. Persa, I apologize.
Not a problem. I'm going to talk about something I don't know a whole lot about, but I have been through many council meetings, and our water fund, water and sewer, water is your biggest moneymaker, to my understanding. And it usually, I'm going to say plus or minus $10 million, but I don't know. When I look at this slide here, it says water and sewer fund, no, no, revenue, where's the, oh, water and sewer revenue, $52,406,732. And then it goes over to expenses, and it's the exact same number. There's no way that's possible. So, my question is, do we transfer the money? But you can't have $52 million, and it comes to the exact same penny. Something does not add up. So, that's my question.
Yes, Mr. Segar?
It'd be the city manager, ma'am, I apologize, but I just, excuse me.
I apologize. The council was talking, I just was trying to see, is that Gonzalez, Kendrick, or Solomon? Did y'all have a question for, wasn't you, Kendrick? You have a question for Mr. Persa?
No.
Oh, okay, I just zoned that. So, I apologize for that. Oh, Councilman Solomon, though. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask staff, could they answer the question?
I would say almost every municipal budget in the U.S. looks like that. You balance it at the beginning, you balance, you know, you make your estimate of your revenues, and then you don't go over that with your expenses. Obviously, at the end of the year, we don't, there's no one, not any city in the U.S. hits those numbers exactly, but that's the plan, and we come very close to it.
And if I, not to be argumentative, not to be whatever, I just don't understand how $52 million worth of revenue and $52 million worth of expenses, there's no way. So, I'm asking, do we transfer money? Because we used to make $8, $10 million or more. So, do we quit making $8 or $10 million, or by some poof, it comes out to the exact penny? That's what I'm really asking, is how could it even be that way? It sends a red flag to me that something can't be right, or something got, something's going on.
No, sir, nothing's going on. Everything is accounted for on revenues and expenditures. Everything you see under there, under that expenditure column, is going to be a salary, a project, paying WCID, and yes, the utility fund does pay the general fund for those expenses that it would have if it was operating as a business on its own, so it pays its share of human resources, IT. Every bit of that is under that expense column.
Yes, sir, I understand expenses, but what I'm saying is, I've watched council meetings in the past where the water fund is surplus $8 million, $10 million, maybe more, and all of a sudden now it's balanced at a $52 million deal. That's what I'm asking, do we quit making money? What the heck's going on?
No, sir, it's never changed. You're just, you're not.
I don't know nothing about stuff, so I'm.
No, I'm not saying that. It's just, you're looking at the highest level of detail there. That's what I was trying to say. When you look at the expenses, there are transfers to the general fund to cover for those things, and then there's also what's payment in lieu of taxes, that if the water fund was a standalone business, it would be paying taxes. So, if you want to look at that as profit, you can, but I would say the utility fund should never have been making a profit. It should always have been balanced.
But the, and I guess I just, I don't understand the books, so I'll just be real plain. I'm not a accountant.
Mr. Persa, I think your time is up. It's not red. Oh, it is up. Mr. Persa, I apologize, I was looking, writing down people's names. Your time, mister? That's wrong. See, I was looking at that too, glimpsing, and when it turns on my eyes like this, that means it's red. That's just letting me know that you done went over some time, that you can request from the council.
I prefer going by this one, ma'am.
I wish I could too, but you can't.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Those, the clock running down up there is negative three.
Yes, ma'am. I was, I was looking, I was writing down who was coming next. Okay, anyone else for the budget? Sir, did you sign up for the budget?
I signed up for the.
Oh, no, I got rid of that. Sir, no, I didn't get rid of it. I know what you were signing up for, but just do the budget for this one. Let me see, can I find yours? Because I can, sir, you can come speak first, you can do that later.
Okay, that's fine.
No big deal.
All right, first off, this is my first meeting.
Just say your name for the record.
My name is George Spear. I live at 1903 Brundrant Drive.
Okay, you don't have to fill out one, I'm just going to write budget if it's okay with you.
That's fine, that's fine with me. I just moved here from Florida, and I'd like to say that I have some issues with the budget, so I need to know, when is your final budget going to be approved? Is there a workshop to do this? Because this must be, is this the first reading, or is it the second reading of the proposal? I also, I just heard that somebody, and correct me if I'm wrong, is making $800,000 a year? Or two, let's just say, let's just say as an example. I haven't looked at your budget, but I'm saying, but if you're looking at, and I think Colleen has 150,000 citizens, I believe, all right? I just came from a place that had 100,000, and I believe that the average salary in town is, let's just say $60,000, that I should not be paying anybody on the council to represent the citizens three times that amount of money. That's part of the problem with America right now, the budget, CEOs that make 10 times the average salary of soldiers. So, I'm going to look at the budget, and I'm going to be back, and I'm going to be realistic. In California, there were people that were ripping off the citizens, and I hope to God that it's not happening in Colleen, but I'm going to check it out. Thank you.
Sir, did they catch the people in California?
They caught them, they caught them, they put them in jail.
Good. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to assure the gentleman that, to my knowledge, nobody in the city of Colleen that works for the city makes $800,000 a year.
Sir, 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 once you take a seat, you had time, you could have used it. Sir, because you don't know the rules, you had some time, you had like 35 seconds, but once they, okay, that's all I wanted to know. Okay, now he has the floor, that's it. Okay, continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, you mentioned the city council up here. City council in the city of Colleen makes $250 a month, so about $8.33.
City council in the city of Colleen makes $250 a month, so about $8.33 a day, just to be clear. So thank you and welcome to Colleen.
Sir, I agree. Welcome to Colleen, and the residents have to vote on our salary. It's in our charter. We don't have a say. At some levels of government, they do have a say, they do their own salary, but the people vote on how much we get paid. All right, with that being said, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Sagara, I mean, Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to set the date up September 2nd, 2025, to consider adoption of the budget.
Councilmember Sagara. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carried five to zero. Madam Secretary.
PH 25044, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by National Logistics Training Center, Inc., on behalf of the Catholic Diocese of Austin, flume number 25-03, to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map from a residential mix designation to a regional commercial designation for approximately 13.7 acres out of the GW Ferris survey. Abstract number 306. The subject properties are locally addressed as 108 and 110 West Elms Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan's future land use map by changing the designation of approximately 13.7 acres out of the GW Ferris survey." Abstract number 306, "From a residential mix designation to a regional commercial designation, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you very much. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown.
First of all, what kind of trade school would need a B4 zoning? We think that that would have to be some sort of automotive repair or something at that level for it to be into a B4 zoning. But more importantly, the council needs to think about the fact that this is a flume change, a future land use map change. This is part of our 2040 comprehensive plan that the mayor loves so much. But this is also a plan that was put together with a lot of input from the public. This was put together with multiple walkshops, this was put together with multiple workshops. When we were putting this plan together, we were meeting sometimes three times a week to try to get this done, the budget done, and the work of the city. But we always got a lot of input from the citizens, not one public hearing over at P&amp;Z and then one public hearing over here, where you only get to talk to y'all once. It's also important to remember that, once you change the flume, it's changed, and now you've made it a regional commercial instead of the residential mix that it should be according to our current comprehensive plan. If the trade school goes out of business, it is still going to end up being regional commercial. If it goes through as planned as a B4, then you've got just a B4 extended lot there in the midst, the middle of a bunch of residential area. Is that really what is best for that area? There are, in the ordinance, chapter 31, there are actually questions you're supposed to ask when it comes to changing the future land use map. Some of those questions include, is it fitting for that area? Is the infrastructure there? Do you have enough information to make the decision, knowing that the decision you're making is going to be for the best of the public, for the best of the people who live in that surrounding area? That is part of the ordinance as a responsibility for y'all. And if you can't answer yes to all the questions that are there in chapter 31, and if you want to see them, go ahead and pull up the giraffe that's there for the public hearing on item number 17. And it will tell you the questions you're supposed to ask. If you can't answer yes to all of those, that this is best for what's going for the area, best for the citizens, best for the public, the infrastructure is there to support it, that it's good for the environment, that it's not gonna be harmful to the environment, that it is suitable, or that you have enough information to answer all of those questions, then it's incumbent upon this council to vote no to this flume change.
Public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Solomon?
May I make a motion that we approve, PH 25-044?
Councilmember Sagara?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary.
PH 25045, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Quintero Engineering, LLC, on behalf of SS Springs, LLC, flume number 25-04, to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map, flume, from a regional commercial designation to a residential mix designation for approximately 7.2 acres, being part of Lot 1, Block 1, Rosewood Edition. The subject property is locally addressed as 5500 Rose Garden Loop, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan's future land use map by changing the designation of approximately 7.2 acres, being part of Lot 2, Block 1, Rosewood Edition, from a regional commercial designation to a residential mix designation, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mrs. Mesher has gone through the PowerPoints. Would you like for her to go back through them? Thank you. All right. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. State your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Counsel. Pedro Quintero. We are asking counsel support for this flume amendment to residential mix. We feel that it will revive this area that hasn't seen growth in years, and we think we can do a development that will complement the residential mix that's there. In this request, we are supported by city staff and a vote from P&amp;Z, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. There are no questions. Public hearing is open. Ms. Juanita, that's you, ma'am. How are you?
I'm good. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you very much. I am a fairly new resident of Colleen. I just purchased a home in the Rosewood Garden section. I live at 5114 Rose Garden Loop, and I've been there exactly a year this month. I'm just gonna talk pretty much very quickly so I can get to all my points and kind of give you a background. Mayor, you've already kind of given your opinion, and you're in my favor, I have to say. But I want to talk about some of the issues that we've had, that development, the first home was built about two and a half years ago. The development in the community, in the subdivision, is incomplete. We still have vacant lots. We don't have a community center. We don't have a usable dog park. We have HOA rules that can't be enforced because of the type of development of the homes. The homes were built, we have the majority of the community, that's the plat map right there. This is what they're recommending or wanting to rezone, is this section right here. Seton sits back here, all of your residential's are over here, Rosewood convalescent is right here. I live here. This section right here really doesn't affect me, but it affects our community. And I just happened to be in that zone to get the letter. We're not opposed to building, it's the type of building that they're proposing. They're proposing 22 double-family homes. That equates to 44 units, 88 cars, assuming there's two per household, and the mayor touched on that. And we already have 164 units, two cars per household. That's 328 cars, assuming there's two per household, some of them have three. So in that little subdivision right there, and you drive by it all the time, is extremely congested. And I vote no unless there's some stipulations. The type of housing they want to propose, why can't it be single-family housing? Or a mix as to what this community already is? You have a home, you have a townhome. You have a home, you have a townhome or duplex. So we're not opposed to that being developed, it's just how it's developed. We would like to see the developer finish what he started. Get us a community center. Get us a usable dog park. Get all the vacant lots built up. Give us a community. We don't have any stop signs. We don't have any children-at-place signs. The HOA is doing the best that they can, the builders build a townhome with one-car garage or one-car driveway.
Ma'am, your time is up, but you could ask the counsel for extra.
May I have another minute?
Councilmember.
Okay. So we have one driveway with one car. The second car has to park on the street. What are they gonna do?
But ma'am, stop one moment. Can we start her time back over? Because it was in 12 seconds. It's just one minute. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
I wasn't looking. Thank you.
So it's not the HOA's fault, they're doing the best they can, it's the builder. Some of the builders in there have one-car driveway. My builder, Emmons, did great. I can put two cars in my driveway. Some of the townhomes, they can put two cars in the driveway. So it's about how it's built up. The Rosewood, Rose Garden, very, very dangerous intersection. We beg of you to consider a traffic control device. We need a street light right there. People come around the corner, they're trying to make that intersection up at Central Expressway, they cut in front of people. We've had multiple fatalities there. Six weeks ago, I come out of the car wash, and there's an SUV on its hood flipped over. People try to go east, they try to go west, there's one turn lane. We need two turn lanes going east, we need two turn lanes going west. We need some traffic control. And until those issues are addressed.
Ma'am, I apologize, but you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
You know, I'll wait until at the end of all.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay. Melissa Bryle?
When considering whether to approve a request to amend the city's future land use map or flume, the city council shall consider the following factors. Is the proposed amendment consistent with the principles and policies set forth in the comprehensive plan? Is the proposed amendment compatible with the character of the surrounding area? What is the impact of the proposed amendment on infrastructure provision, including water, wastewater drainage, and the transportation network? What is the impact of the proposed amendment on the city's ability to provide, fund, and maintain services? What is the impact of the proposed amendment on environmentally sensitive and natural areas? What specific conditions, population size, or characteristics of the area, and building form, property structure, conditions, etc., have changed sufficiently to render the current map designations inappropriate or out of date? Do the city staff and planning zoning commission and/or the city council have sufficient information to move ahead with the decision? That's an ordinance, that is what you're required to do. I'm gonna speak very adamantly about this one because I live in that area. I was there in 2017 when Councilwoman Nash held a public meeting, and everyone was opposed to this. But when we came in, we were told that this was going to be boutiques, this was going to be high-class, this was gonna be very nicely built, it was gonna be beautiful, it's the gateway to Colleen. And what do we have? We have a Dollar General, we have a nail salon, we have a vape shop. Okay, good. So we didn't uphold that. The townhouses are not where they were supposed to be, Mr. Solomon, you know that. Duplexes are not where they told us they would be, you know that also. There's flooding concerns, there's drainage concerns, and of course, there are traffic concerns. If you leave it as a commercial and there is like, it would actually probably be ideal for a B1, another medical center, or something along those lines, which is consistent with what is there. We don't have any housing that is on the front edge of Rosewood, especially at that intersection, for a very good reason. Try to go ahead and have a car pull out from right there at that corner, right behind the medical center, and have them try to get out on the expressway, or worse, get out onto Rosewood, and they're gonna try to cut on Rosewood across three or four lanes to get to that turn lane. I guarantee you, I see it every single day. There is no real traffic control, there accidents do happen all the time. This is walking distance for schools, so you're gonna have students that are going to have to walk along that route. This isn't safe, this isn't compatible, this isn't what was decided on with the comprehensive plan. You're making a decision to overrule two, almost two full years of citizen input, and you're gonna do it with three minutes of input from us. Please say no to this, especially, Mr. Solomon, you know how important this is.
Mr. Pedro, you signed up to speak as a citizen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you have three minutes. Is there a school over there in that area, Mr. Cagle? Where kids walk to school over there?
There's not one right there, but any kids that live in that area have to.
What school are they walking to?
That, I couldn't tell you.
It's not a school, is there a school? Councilman Solomon, is there a school within, oh, the ones on, I know which ones. It's not even close to that area. It's nowhere. Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown, you do not have the floor. You know, sir, I apologize. You know right from wrong. Why every Tuesday when we meet, we gotta go through the same drama? If you don't want to be here, then leave. Quit this. Ms. Brown, this is my, this is my last warning. The next time you do it, I don't want to put you out. But you could, I was not talking to you. Ms. Brown, I have the floor. Stop. Sir, I apologize. Mr. C, Ms. Brown, stop. I apologize to anyone that's new here. I truly apologize. Mr. Cagle, the closest one, is Ms. Zager or Mr. Wallace? Sir, is Ms. Zager, the closest one, what street is that when you get to Stan Sluter and you turn down? They have, you put, the selection site. Silly, see, that's the closest one. How many miles is that? Because I know a kid in middle school is not walking from that area across it to get to Cedar Valley, because they'll be more closer to Harker Heights.
Cedar, there's.
Liberty Hill and Cedar Valley?
On the opposite side of Rosewood, there is, it's called Timber Ridge Elementary.
How far is that from that location?
Bear with me just a second.
Is Cedar Valley, is Liberty Hill too, is over there? If anybody, for the residents that don't know, if you're not up here at this podium, you cannot be speaking from the audience. And I'm letting you know because you don't know. Please do not follow that example, because it's out of order, period. And I apologize. Yes, ma'am. Is 10 miles, 5 miles, 6?
Timber Ridge is roughly 3/4 of a mile as the crow flies. There's also a school in Harker Heights, I think it's called Mountain Lion.
And that's the opposite direction? Okay, so a. So a school bus with KISI, I think it's two miles, over two miles, they'll pick you up. So they're not walking. Okay, sir, you can come up. You can come up, sir. I just thank you, Ms. Messer, because that other school in Harker Heights, it's total opposite direction. Sir, you have three minutes.
Three minutes. I feel like it'd be a disservice to not get up here and speak again for my client. I am a resident. I feel like this project's about to get turned down over traffic. And I wanted to talk on, like, this B3 would be a higher density in traffic on the infrastructure that's already there. In addition to that, with this new Chapter 31 zoning, the townhomes and the small homes would also bring a higher density than what we're trying to do. Also, like, this is, I say this very gracefully. When we did the Rose... Our firm did the Rosewood Garden Loop. We did the PUD, the planning, the zoning, the plat, the construction plans. And in this process, in the Flume process, a TIA was identified. We did a TIA that asked for a signal and left turn lanes. We turned it into staff during our construction plans, and the staff turned down the signal, but required the turn lanes. So to... And I say this graciously because city manager Ken Kegel wasn't here yet. The public work staff that was, he was not part of this Flume in approval of the plans, is what I'm saying. The staff that did make this decision, they no longer work here. So just the professional courtesy that the city staff, and none of them that's here. So I'm not pushing blame or trying to stir up an argument. Y'all approved it without a traffic signal. And now I feel that by saying you're gonna disapprove it and not support it would go against and penalize us for trying to develop and bring development in this part of town. That's all I have to say. I don't know if that changes any minds. But we'd be glad to share the information we have.
But sir, in all fairness to you, we've been down this road. You have the option to pull it. And the last time, it's the District 2 rep. The residents was 100% against it. And that's why we decided to pull it at that time. And we had community meetings to make that. And this is not the same council. But once Mr. Wright, you, me, and others met with them, and we had a large gathering because they was against it, then that, not this council, well, a couple of us, not all of us, they voted for it after the residents agreed to it. And you already know, in all fairness, the council, if the residents really feel like... And you're right, everything you said, TIA, all that is right. But this council and the one prior, and I just believe if the people voted their men, and you know it because we've been down this road, they're gonna follow the people that live there every day and how they feel about getting in and out. You do have options. They don't have to vote on this. I mean, and you can say, I wanna pull it. And I wanna, we can go back through who the council representative is, Solomon, now, not me. And we started that whole process that me and you and Mr. Wright had to go through. And I think it took us over two months to get to that point. So in all fairness, this is not the same council. And I don't want it to seem like the ones that's on here that they will support it because they were not. So I just wanted to share that with you. You have options. With that being said...
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
The residents that objected to that original list development plan were from the Deerwood Estates further south. So we do have new citizens with new concerns. And it's just hard to say that some of the same citizens that are objecting own the duplexes that are on Rosewood Garden Loop. So our complementary development standard only complements the spirit of what we were trying to do there. But I don't know if we want to table it. I would, I guess, it would send a message to this development and what we propose.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. The next person is... If I mispronounce your name, I'm gonna go with M.T. Z.E.W.A.L. Okay, yes, ma'am. I apologize. Ma'am, it's your time. Ma'am, it's your... Ma'am, ma'am, please come to the podium. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and sharing concern.
Yes, ma'am.
That I have. And most of concern that I have, the previous two ladies really covered the most of it. I'm just going to add a little bit more. Can developers, like my suggestion, can developers divide the lot slightly bigger to provide the pleasant living to the homeowner and prevent the congesting the neighbors? Also, what are they going to do with the existing containment pond? There is a two huge, three or four huge, big containment pond for the drainies and all that stuff. And the area is like slightly like elevating. So we have an issue with our drainage, when we have our flood and all that stuff. I'm really concerning, what are they going to do with a really big containment pond that they have right now? Are they gonna cover it and build it on top of it? I am opposing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Gonzalez, you had clicked. If not, I'm going to Councilman Solomon. No, it's his district. So what questions do you have?
Thank you, madam. But for, we're looking at future use for this particular area. But is, who regulates and mandates if there's, the intended use is not being met? Meaning the community centers and the developments that are already supposed to be there? I find that highly concerning, considering the whole purpose of us putting HOAs in place were to ensure that they were maintaining our areas and things like that. But if we're going on all this time and there's still development that hasn't been met, how does that process work?
PUD in place that specified several, quote, "proposed amenities." So in the PUD itself, it lists a proposed amenity center. It lists a proposed, two proposed dog parks. But nothing in the PUD specifies the timeline for which that has to be developed. We have, in the last several years, been much more careful to include those standards in our PUDs so that there is a trigger date by which those amenities have to be provided. But currently, the PUD that's in place had proposed private streets, proposed amenities, none of which unfortunately have come to fruition.
Thank you. That is most unfortunate. And then we do have some new constituents that are here. And I just, if we could, just for the record, if it's in order, to explain the process of what triggers traffic TIA analysis. Can we do that? Just explain general for the new, for our new constituents. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So to trigger a TIA, it depends on how many trips that a development will occur. If it's over 100 homes, if it's a commercial development that, you know, like a gas station or something, where we see that it'll generate over 100 peak hour trips in, you know, in an hour, that will then trigger any developer to have to do a TIA. There's a peak hour trip, and then there's also a max daily trip, depending on whatever developments. It's based on ITE, International Traffic Engineering manuals, where they assign certain numbers, certain amount of trips per square footage, per residential unit that's, you know, you go, have enough to do in the math to figure out what it's gonna proposal, you know, what's the proposed generation of trips onto the roads. Once they hit that threshold, then they're required to do a TIA or a traffic impact analysis.
Thank you. Mr. Zager, that's in the beginning. Is there ever a point in time where, once the development is done and people start moving in and those changes start to occur, that we would consider a relook at a particular area?
Yes. If it is a overall big development and they go beyond, or they try to expand or be, you know, increase that type of development. So say, if this is one big subdivision, it had one or two phases, and now they're coming in to do a third phase, and we consider it to be an overall development. It then can bring in the trips that are generated from the previous development. The apartment complex across the street on Rosewood, they're coming in for two new buildings. They're now adding to the existing. They've changed the original plan. So now we have to look at the trips that the overall development is going to occur. So if they're adding onto something, then there is a potential that we would require that TIA.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, madam.
Just to go with Councilman Solomon, just Councilman Gonzalez. When we start these developments and we sign off on it, some of our requirements are these amenities, correct, Mrs. Messer? Correct? Okay.
Again, the PUD had amenities that were included, but they were not, there is no trigger date in the PUD.
Right, right. I understood that. And I just, just... He has the option. If he tabled this item, I'm just saying if that's an option. He said no. But I wanna be fair because I am pro-development. I just, my whole stance on this is not now, period. Not saying get rid of it. I understand you wanna make change, but not now. If he don't pull it before we vote, how long is it? He gonna set out six months or is that a year?
Ma'am, this is a future land use map amendment request. It's not a zoning request.
Okay, okay.
So there is no waiting period for a Flume amendment.
Councilman Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I don't mean to go over this. But I was there in '17. And what he mentioned in terms of the residents in Deerwood, we were, it was a whole lot of us. There was no other residents there because it was just land. And we opposed it because of what he said he would want it to have. At first, it was houses and a mixture of duplexes, leased duplexes, mixture of houses, HOA, which I'm surprised that it's an HOA. I just found out tonight that it's a HOA. I'm just really surprised because I go past there every day. That property adjaunts to my property, actually. And it is, the drainage was, I complained to the city before I was on council many times about the drainage. And it's just was, because the whole Deerwood residents, well, at least four or five homes, was affected by that drainage. And we still are. Because they said they would put these, what do you call those holding? Detention ponds. And it's inadequate. And it still is. And I think that we missed it somehow. I think on this project, it's not on the current staff here, but we, I think we really missed this one. This was a big opportunity. Because it's supposed to have been, the way it was sold to us, it was supposed to have been the gateway. It's the first street, the first main street to enter into Colleen. And now the apartments across the street from Rosewood Garden is a good example of what it should have been. And I think somehow we missed this, missed the opportunity to make that a beautiful area over there. Nevertheless, he did not, they did not hold up what they said they would do. I remember everything. And when I go over there, you know, I'm just saddened. They said about the, like, the dog park, the dog park is, it's up against the Deerwood neighborhood. I could not believe it. It's just up against somebody's fence. And they supposedly had a park there. It's laughable. You can laugh at that park that they got. The residents deserve that larger area. I think it deserves a much better park. Because it's, it could be a nice area, and there's some nice homes over there. I just think that we missed it somewhere down the line, and it's just sad. But I could not go for it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. And Mrs. Messer, I'm very disappointed. I supported that project in 2017 as a council member. It did not live up to the standards that I helped to pitch to the District 2 residents to build. And when they started it, I talked to you, Mr. Revell, and other people there about what was not happening. And that's right off the bat. And after that, it has gone down. So I, for the residents of District 2, I didn't, I didn't see that coming. So I don't support it. I just do not support it. So counsel, what is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, did we close the public hearing?
Public hearing closed. What is your pleasure, Councilman Solomon?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we disapprove.
Councilmember, is there a second candidate? All in favor? Yes. All opposed? No. Motion fails four to one. Madam Secretary, whenever you ready.
PH 25046, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by John Gilmore on behalf of Key Sup Sun and Soon Sun Sun, case number Z2521, to rezone approximately 0.67 acres, being part of Lot 1, Block 1, out of the Chaney addition from R1 Single Family Residential District to B5 Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 3413 Old Farm-to-Market, 440, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 0.67 acres, being Lot 1, Block 1, out of the Chaney addition from R1 Single Family Residential District to B5 Business District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Counsel Mrs. Messer went through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through them? Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown?
Everybody's so tall. Okay. Look, this is the aerial view of the neighborhood zoomed in with satellite view. Those large lots around what's being requested to be made B5 are all large lot homes. There are actually houses there. So to expand this to B5, the only way to have ingress egress to that back portion of it is to go straight through. So you're gonna have, apparently, businesses, B5 something on both sides of it going into what is a neighborhood. It's coming out on 440 in an area that is pretty congested. They couldn't even get a picture of it without a bunch of cars going by. I really don't think that this is an area for B5. I don't care what the future plan is for it because it's not about the project. It's about the general zoning of it. Again, there is a reason that we set up our comp plan the way we did. Again, there is a reason why neighborhoods don't typically have B5s in the neighborhood because they're louder businesses, they're more intrusive businesses. And when you start doing that into established housing areas, what you're going to have is KPD getting called all the time because of the noise. What you're gonna have is code enforcement being called all the time because of the noise. I know that we don't wanna build a whole bunch of houses, but this appears that that is just an R1, not even platted. Let's just leave it for right now. That B5 doesn't need to be extended back there. I know y'all tried not to listen to me. I get it. I know the mayor's gonna call me a liar again because I know where places are and how it works. And I know that .7 is less than 2. So if y'all wanna just disregard me because you don't like me or my personality or my style, go ahead and... style, go ahead and do it. But it's not about me, it's about policy. It's not about personality. And on this particular case, the policy is whether or not you should have the highest level before manufacturing put in amongst existing homes. It's not like we're putting this into someplace that's undeveloped. The houses are already there, the people already live there. If they didn't come out and they didn't submit their paperwork, there's two reasons for it. One, a lot of times, that paperwork doesn't get to them until either right before, or the day of, or after P and Z, or they've given up on y'all. They've given up on all of you listening to us, because you've proven over and over, and I appreciate the last vote, I do, but over and over again, y'all are voting saying we don't care. I would recommend that you disapprove of this one also.
Mr. Gilmore, you have three minutes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council.
Sir?
How are you this evening?
Fine, you, sir.
I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Sun. They've owned this property for multiple years, and he came to me and decided it was time to clean up the zoning. It's been split zone like this as long as he's owned it. And looking at the future land use map, it meets the requirements of what the city would like to see that done there. And so we're requesting your approval for this matter. You have any questions?
No, sir. Public hearing is closed, and I do agree, you shouldn't have two split zoning for a person in this their property. Can I get a motion to approve or disapprove? Councilmember Sagaras.
Mayor, I move to approve PH 25-046 as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember Sagara.
Second that.
Thank you. All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 25047, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Mitchell and Associates on behalf of Hahn Investments LLC, case number Z 2522, to rezone approximately 0.95 acres out of a 2.358 acre tract in the A. Dixon survey, abstract number 266, from R1 Single Family Residential District to B3 Local Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as 554 58th Street, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 0.95 acres out of a 2.5, excuse me, 2.358 acre tract out of the A. Dixon survey, abstract number 266, from R1 Single Family Residential District to B3 Local Business District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mrs. Mesher has gone through the slides. Y'all want her to continue the slide deck?
I just have a question.
Mrs. Mesher, would you please come up? Councilmember Kendrick, when she get up here, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. I know, at approximately, what time does that letter go out to the citizens around that area?
The letter goes out prior to the public hearing. So...
Approximately, how many days?
It's 15 days prior to the public hearing.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown.
Can I get the Bubba Perser treatment, since the presentation is already up, and have a look at the aerial view pictures?
Councilman Sagaras, yes, no?
Thank you. Back one, perfect. Thank you so much. You look around what is actually built there, not just what is zoned, you see that it's all mostly housing. My biggest issue with this request is twofold, really. What kind of business goes in there? Knowing that the area in the B3 request, gas station or liquor stores, more than likely what's going to go, a package store, I apologize, is more than likely the type of businesses that would be put in that area, because it doesn't make sense to put a whole lot of other stuff there. The bigger issue is that according to the staff report, there is no drainage there. So when we have drainage issues, we end up with flooding issues. This is not proper infrastructure. This is not complete infrastructure. This is not everything that is required to develop, according to the staff report. So what happens if they go in, they start digging, and then you start having those houses flooding, the street flooding? You start ending up with all those issues, because even though we know the rule about they can't increase the flow, we also know the reality is that that is hardly ever the way it turns out. Don't, also, then you put a business there, and you have a whole bunch of traffic coming down Veterans to 58th and Swing Creek right in that area. I just don't see where this makes sense. But y'all make your own decision.
You're asking why staff's recommendation is for approval? So the property in the frontage has B5 zoning, and the property owner's intent is to develop it for commercial use. So the recommendation, initially, in our first meeting with the applicant, the request was B5. And at that time, I advised that we've never, that I'm aware of, recommended approval of B5 immediately abutting existing single-family development. But that we could support B3 in an effort to allow him to develop as contemplated, and given the new screening device requirements that were put in place by the council a couple of months back, that require an enhanced screening device between commercial and residential. We felt like, given the frontage on a major arterial road, that commercial use was viable in this location, and given the screening device requirements for the adjacent residential.
Yes, ma'am. If there's a drainage problem, what?
Drainage is a function of the site development process. It's not a function of the zoning process.
Say that again, please.
Drainage is a function of the site development process, not a function of the zoning process.
Thank you. Just wanted to be clear with the council. Public hearing is closed. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilman Sagaras.
Mayor, I move to approve PH 25047 as presented.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 25048, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Mitchell and Associates, Inc., on behalf of Colleen Summit Builders LLC, case number Z 2523, to rezone approximately 6.7 acres, being lots 14 through 23, Block 7, lots 13 through 30, Block 8, out of Morris Subdivision Phase 2, from R2 Two Family Residential District to SF2 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 1101 through 1108, 1110, 1201 through 1206, and 1301 through 1306 Nina Drive, 1102 and 3204, 3206, 3208, 3210, 3212, 3214, and 3216 Rick's Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 6.7 acres, being lots 14 through 23, Block 7, lots 13 through 30, Block 8, out of Morris Subdivision Phase 2, from R2 Two Family Residential District to SF2 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is the applicant here? Sir, would you like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ace Renaud with Mitchell and Associates. We appreciate staff's help on this one, and you using existing zoning ordinance to help us adapt to some site constraints on this property that allow us to develop this property and hopefully provide a different type of housing available that we don't see in this general area. I'm happy to answer any further questions you might have.
I love being answered. It's taken care of during plating, as essentially what was just said. It's not a process of zoning. It's a process during the development stage. So what they're saying is, we'll take care of that during plating. You have the same issue on this property, all of these properties, as a matter of fact, but the drainage will go over to the Tremere Road ditch, Drainage Creek. So you're going to be taking away a lot of roots and everything to put it over there. However, I'm going to surprise the heck out of everybody. I'm going to let you know that I actually support this. I think that the less density in that area would be good. So instead of having the townhouses, you have the smaller single-family lots. And typically, the smaller single-family lots are more affordable, which would be good in that area and increase homeownership. It's not as dense as the duplexes, so it means less traffic. There are not a lot of houses like that in that area. Let's all mark this on our calendar. I'm going to say this publicly. I agree with Jim Wright and his two letters of support for this, because the two responses came from him. I do agree with him, knowing this. I agree with staff that SF2 is a much better fit for this, and so I would definitely support
Councilmember Solomon.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
I second that.
All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Motion passes, five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 25049, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Amir A. Abdulazim on behalf of Abdulazim Family Rebalced Trust, case number Z 2524, to rezone approximately 0.19 acres, being Lot 11, Block 1, out of the Bel Air Edition, Section 1, from B1 Professional Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 909 Bel Air Drive, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 0.19 acres, being Lot 11, Block 1, out of the Bel Air Edition, Section 1, from B1 Professional Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Councilman Solomon, do you have any questions? Is the applicant here? Would you state your name, please?
My name is Omar Abdulazim. We used to be in this office for several years as an engineer, and when we moved out, like, three years ago, I did not want to say it as a commercial, so I don't affect the neighborhood. That's why I'm requesting to go back to R1.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do you have any question? Anyone have a question?
No, sir. That's, that's, yes, sir, that's good. Public hearing open.
We have a moment of honesty. I don't really care about this, this particular zoning case. What I do care about is that it's an opportunity for the public to come up and speak and address the council, which has been taken away from us largely. So if my only option is to be able to address things and try to slip some words in that can encourage you to think about other things, is to come up and talk about rezoning from a B1 to an R1, then that's what I'm going to do. Because we deserve more than just a three-minute opportunity to talk to council members, and a lot of you are unresponsive, where you tell us, if you're the mayor, just contact the council members, and they'll take care of it. And then you say stuff like, well, you know, the police have said that it's, and code has said it's taken care of, so I don't consider it necessary to put on the agenda. So if I have to talk about a B1 to an R1 in order to come up and address those concerns with y'all, I'm going to come up and tell you that in this particular situation, I think an R1 is very fitting. I think it's great that you have the opportunity to listen to citizens for three minutes about it, no matter how they feel, whether they agree with you or they disagree with you, no matter what they want to say about the property. I agree with the person who came up and talked about it, who owns the property. This is, this would be good for that community, for that neighborhood. I think a house there would be really nice. But again, it's the only opportunity to come up and talk to y'all. So if I have to come up here and just kind of ramble for three minutes, to tell you that, like, I don't know, what would also be nice is if permits for bigger events were approved and not delayed and not costing us extra, then I'll come talk about a B1 to an R1 in order to do that. If I want to come up and ask why the mayor never picks up her gavel for anybody else who has been here, but she wants to pick up her gavel every time I talk, I'll talk about changing from a B1 to an R1 in order to ask those questions. If I want to talk about why the mayor apologizes and simps for Bubba Perser, and then comes on my case about this...
Ma'am, please stay on the agenda. If you want to attack, do that some other time, but stay on the agenda, please. Stay focused.
I think taking this from a neighborhood commercial to a single-family residential is good, regardless of whether the mayor thinks I'm on the agenda or not. As long as I believe I am, then it, that it's actually what the ruling is. If there's any questions, y'all want to give me a Bubba Perser treatment and allow me to have a back-and-forth engaging conversation with you?
Ma'am, we're not going to be attacking residents. They own the agenda item. Please do not call...
I'm complimenting Mr. Perser for his ability to have a conversation during his time.
Please do not be calling that other people's name. You're the main one to scream.
You do, all the time.
Ma'am, your time is up.
You just ate up my time.
The next person is Mr. AMR. Are you here, sir? Please, you have three minutes.
Omar Abdulazim, I'm the owner, and again, like I said, I'm going to transfer the B1 to R1 for the neighborhood, for the benefit of the neighborhood. Any question? Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, we need to close the public hearing. Yes, ma'am. PH 25050, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending Colleen Code of Ordinances Chapter 31 zoning by amending the zoning amendment approval requirements, providing for additional signage and public hearing notification requirements, amending home occupation regulations, providing for multifamily and mixed uses in business districts, and providing for small lot regulations. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapter 31 of the City of Colleen Code of Ordinances, amending zoning amendment approval requirements..." approval requirements, providing for additional signage requirement for zoning amendment requests, amending permissible home occupation regulations, providing for multifamily and mixed uses in business districts, providing for small lot regulations, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date.'"
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I know this is a kind of special item, and all I'm asking when speakers come up, give the respect to staff and to council, Mr. Kago, and let's just try to work together if there's room for compromise. With that being said, public
I'm going to start off talking really slow, so maybe if you pay attention, you'll understand what they have been trying to tell you, is that the majority of these changes are not optional. The majority of these changes are state-required and mandated now. There are still options. You don't have to build a smaller lot if you're R1. You can still have the option of being zoned R1 and making a larger lot when you plat. You're not required to do the smaller one, but we are required to allow it by state law now. So the council really does have to vote in favor of those particular changes. It is a state mandate that we don't have an option on. So I hope that helps to clarify things. What I would like to know, since there is nothing in the proposed revisions, would this allow for approved R1s to come back and submit a plat amendment to staff that would then reduce the size of their R1 lots, in which case it would not go to PZ and it would not go to the city council, even if it's through a PUD, because everybody, the council seated, the ability to approve plats completely to staff? No, it's an administrative decision. And I think that's a decision that is really important. So if it's coming in, especially as a PUD, and it's been approved for a certain size, those plats should not be allowed to be changed. And I think that there needs to be, in addition to this amendment, to say that moving forward, if they want to come in and request to be able to do smaller lots and let them come in and do a PUD amendment, that has to go through PZ and then has to come to the council. But it shouldn't be an administrative decision at that point. There should be no retroactive going back to change them. That is my biggest concern and question about this right now. I also would like to know, where is the conversation on the supermajority vote to overrule planning and zoning? It was brought up when this was initially stated, because it wasn't required by the law. It was never written into the ordinance, but it is important to the people. It is important to the people, because planning and zoning tends to listen to the people more. They tend to look at the broader picture of everything. And if the planning and zoning, that y'all go ahead and appoint to it and say, "We trust you to make these decisions." If they say no to something, it should take a supermajority to overrule them. If they say yes to something and you disagree, it should take a supermajority to overrule them. That should be put in writing. It shouldn't just be an out-there policy that disappears just because the state law doesn't require it.
Mr. MT, is it MTZEWALLES? I don't know. Okay, that's cool. JohnHA and Mr. Wrighton. It could be UN, it could be WN. John? Oh, sir, I apologize for your name. Sir, you have three minutes.
I think I'll do what works.
No, sir, I wouldn't do that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Sir?
My name is JT Han, and I'm the president of the Central Texas Home Builders Association. And I came a couple months ago to talk about affordable housing and tiny homes into this area, especially in the northern area of Colleen. I think what we're missing is that affordable housing is maybe not even going to have a garage. We're in a time right now that people are splitting houses up so they can afford to live. They're paying $500 for a room for all bills paid. That's where we're at right now in our current economy and current cost of living. So to add cost, to take homeownership away by adding, you know, the back-entry garages and the extra alleyways and the things like that, I just think it's taking away affordability for these. You might as well just keep them 50-foot and not be able to do them at all, which we can't. We have to do this because of the legislation. So I would really like to see if we could keep affordability in Colleen and have beautiful homes and not have to put it into the lot cost and the fence cost, and put it into the homes where people can enjoy those homes, that they can have a three-bedroom home for under, hopefully under $200,000. You know, adding a garage is usually $20,000 to $30,000 in cost on these homes. So when you have somebody that needs to be at $150,000 for a new home, it's most likely not going to happen if we keep adding the cost into the lots. So I just really, I'm excited about the ability to build affordable housing in Colleen, but it's going to be very hard to do everything to keep it where it's affordability for our current young soldiers, E1, Z2, Z3. So, thank you.
Okay. Sir, it's a question for you from Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Han. And I appreciate everything that you're trying to do, especially with affordable homes. And you specifically mentioned North Colleen. I find it hard to find anywhere in North Colleen where this would be applicable. It says it's for five acres or more and has not been previously platted. So I doubt that you would run across this in North Colleen. If you did, I would be surprised. But, you know, I do agree with the sentiment of what you're trying to say, and affordability, and obviously, the Texas Legislature passed these bills with the intent of creating more opportunity for affordable housing. So I do understand what you're trying to say.
I want to, I guess I need to clarify that. I came the other day, a month ago, to talk about North Colleen. I know that this is going to be South Colleen and all over, but yeah, just the whole, the whole part of it is that we have to keep the lots affordable to be able to be under $200,000. There's special financing programs, there's special interest rates, there's special things to try to get affordable housing affordable. But if we keep adding things to make affordable housing, this is never going to get affordable. I think you can beautify it. You can still make it beautiful and make, keep the integrity, but adding, you know, in DIAS, Air Force Base up in Abilene, they're about our size. They had alleyways, and the alleyways are just tore up because the dump trucks, or the trash trucks and people, and it just, I don't feel like the infrastructure is going to hold up over time, and then you're going to be redoing the road and the alleyways, so...
So, sir, thank you. Are you finished, Councilmember Alvarez? Okay. Sir, something threw me off, but Mr. Kago answered it. You're against it, but do you have a recommendation?
No, I'm not. I'm a totally affordable housing mom of four. It's the alleyways, it's the cost of the, to get the lots there.
Right. I understood that. I want to challenge in that. I know I move fast. I understood. That's not what you fight. But do you have an option opposed to what you don't want?
I really believe that we're going to end up having more houses without garages, like back in the day before all these garages were put on houses, like the normal. I think, you know, having a double-sized parking in the front, you know, having more concrete in the front, you know, having the grass down the sides and flower beds and, you know, make it beautiful. But the more parking in the front of the house and things of that nature, besides coming around, having it on both sides, you're going to have concrete or asphalt on both sides. So...
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Who's next?
Anybody else?
Any more? Oh, Councilmember Cigar. I apologize. He's so quiet. He sneaks up on me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I mean, that's, there's a lot of challenges with both sides, you know. And so garages not only are for cars. In Texas, you know, we want to make sure that they're beautiful, landscaping and all that. And, you know, these small houses present challenges. It's like, okay, you got to cut your grass, but I don't have a place to put my lawnmower or my stuff. So, I mean, they serve in more purposes than one. So I understand the cost associated with that. And I think that's what the state is trying to do by making, you know, the lot size smaller, because, you know, I remember selling homes where we would buy lots for $8,000, the builders that are represented. And, you know, that's, I don't know, you got to get a quarter of a lot for $8,000 bucks. But a lot of that is right there. I think they're figuring in the lot prices. And I know you're going to have to cut back on a lot of the amenities, but I'm kind of for the garages. I mean, garages serve an important purpose, especially here in Texas, you know, even if they don't park the car here. But I think that, you know, we got to find other ways to keep it affordable, so...
I agree. But if you put it into the cost of the lot by adding the alleyways and the different things of that nature, it's going, it's just going to take it right back out of being affordable, so...
Yeah, that was my concern. That's one reason I want to make clear for the record. I'm talking about options and design plan, not that we can change the state. I don't have a problem with that. I don't even have a problem with what they're saying, but give the individuals that's building or developing or resident that want a house on a small lot, give them a design plan and let them have options. It's not taking away from anything, because I find, I wish I would have looked some more. Somebody sent it to me, but I didn't look at it. That woman have the big old, it's the ugliest thing, with the garage door, that big. It's got to be some more that's better than that. I just, just my opinion. I just, that's just me. I don't like alleys.
You know, mobile homes came in 19, in the 80s. In the 80s, that was the big thing in Colleen, was mobile homes. They didn't have garages. I don't want mobile homes either. And I don't want to have mobile home parks everywhere in Colleen either. But if we can have affordable housing where the lot, you know, people need a place to live, they want homeownership, there's special financing for it, if we could keep it as affordable as possible in lot cost and build cost, I think it would really benefit the City of Colleen for homeownership.
Sir, I understand that, and I understand where the city, because city don't want it to get out of control. My biggest problem with alleys and the way they look, you telling people that that's all they can afford. This is the best we can offer you. It's ugly.
Right.
And why would we treat someone like that? Because they can't afford, like council members up here and others out there, and staff, $200,000, $300,000, and $400,000 home. That's all you can get? It's got to be better than that.
It can be.
So you're being penalized to live in this type of house because you don't have money? No. Give them a design, house design plan option. That's all I'm asking for. You can keep the little park in the back, and if somebody come here and want to build it, build it. But I don't think we should just have it one way. That's me. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
The next person is, is it MTZW? They're calling, they're not here. Dylan Wadis, is he still here, sir? Good evening, sir. Three minutes. That was JT, John Han.
Hi, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Just here to talk about, I guess, the changes that came about with Senate Bill 15 and Senate Bill 840. You know, a lot of what y'all have been talking about already comes down to the design. And the proposed regulations here, I'm not necessarily against having some sort of regulations. It's, we need to have effective regulations that allow for creative design, allow for more different things that we can do to be different, but not limit it to this specific thing. Anything less than a 50-foot, if you want to go to a smaller lot, you have to do an alley-loaded. That doesn't make sense for us. We're not going to be able to do that. And then, like you said, there's a lot of considerations with that that aren't thought. Like, right now, if I went in and wanted to do an alley-loaded subdivision in the city of Colleen, there's not standards there to be able to do that. I mean, whenever y'all were just talking about the pictures on where the services are, all that stuff, that's all stuff that wherever I go and I have to actually build the subdivision, I have to engineer it, there's a lot of stuff in there that we don't know the answers to. Like, how do you drain those subdivisions? How do you grade them? There's a lot of other factors that significantly increase lot costs. And just from a few years ago, lot costs have probably more than doubled from what they used to be. And it's only going to get worse. I don't necessarily see it get better anytime soon. And both of these Senate bills are direct responses to that happening, that they don't see that really happening. We need people to be able to afford homes that now can't. And, you know, like, what it says in the comprehensive plan is basically to make these houses smaller, units smaller and high-quality to be able to attract new people in. And that's really what we want to do. I think this with other things that we've talked about with housing, needs to go back to a stakeholder group. We need to talk about it in depth and not just try and rush it through, because September 1st is right around the corner. I think that we need to talk about it more. And like I said, I'm not against regulation, but I'm for effective regulation and effective design whenever we go through that. Thanks.
Yes, sir. I'm just curious. I support what Mrs. Mesher presented. Don't get me wrong. I just believe there should be other options with what she presented. Give two or three more. That's all I was saying. And I'm just curious, how much would it cost, just estimate, if you were building something like that? Because I know people are going to say it's affordability. My take on what, the reason I said it, totally different than probably yours. I don't like them. I lived in one in the military. I just don't like them. I don't think they say, period. But also, I don't think, because I have low income, a certain amount of income, this is the best you can give me. One design, boom, here you go.
Yeah. I think there's, there's more than, like I said, there's more than alleys. There's a lot of different things that people are doing in other cities.
So how much would that cost? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It depends on the size of the lot. I mean, I would say, I mean, you're probably not going to save anything on a lot if you end up doing this. So like, a 30-foot lot would be equivalent to a 50-foot lot if it's front-loaded. I would say that's probably about the same, because by the time you add in all the drainage infrastructure, all the grading, we'd have to grade every single one of those lots, it's a lot more for the developers to have to eat. And we can't prove that upfront to be able to make these projects work. So there's a lot of other things, and I think that there's more cost-effective ways to do it and still prevent the types of products that you don't want here. And the market already dictates that for the most part. A lot of those, I've talked to people that actually built those houses, they won't do them anymore because they didn't sell. You know, they'll try them out and say, you know, "We could see if this is going to sell or not." And if it doesn't, they're not going to do it again. And a lot of those, we don't allow in our subdivisions on purpose. We deny stuff like that all the time. So it's really about effective design and be able to give us more options so we can do different things.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Gonzalez and then Councilmember Solomon.
So, thank you, Mr. Wadis. I appreciate your feedback. But what we were trying to get to the bottom of is, we have a state mandate that says September 1, we have to make this decision. So we're trying to get an understanding of what those options look like. And in talking to people prior to this, I kept going round and round, but we don't really, well, I, for myself, I don't feel like I'm getting what the cost-effective alternatives are. And then, you know, are we just talking about having the option of putting front garages versus not? I mean, alleys versus front? Like, what are we, what do we really, what does that really mean for us?
So there's different things you can do. I mean, there are some developments now that are doing tiny homes that have, it's parking, it's like, kind of like an apartment complex-ish parking, where they have linear parking or perpendicular parking along the roads to access, where you can park there and be able to walk to your house.
Can I pause you right there for just a moment? But is part of that regulation that we cannot regulate the street parking? That's where they've got our hands tied, is we cannot do that. So is that correct?
Part of it's too, if we just don't regulate it, we are still allowed to do it. We just can't require it. And the same thing with, like, you could also do shared driveway between the lots, like you were saying, where you could do side entry. You can do that.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Mesher, somebody. Councilwoman Gonzalez had a good point. You can, you cannot. Can you clarify what Mr. Wadis is saying? Can we or can we not?
I apologize. Can we or can we not, what exactly?
Off-street parking.
Oh, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm sorry, limiting. Off-street parking.
We cannot require more than, I know we can't require, like, visitor... We cannot require more than, I know we can't require like visitor parking, that's specifically referenced in the statute, but we can require off-street parking.
But I thought it was one space, it was limited to one space.
More, right. We can't require more than one off-street. So, so for each single-family home, we can't require, like typically, a single-family home requires two off-street parking spaces. For townhomes, for example, our zoning regulations require, I believe it's .25 units, .25 parking spaces per unit of visitor parking. We can't require visitor parking, but we can require the one off-street parking space per unit.
Basically.
Sorry, do you mind?
No, I'm talking to Ms., I'm talking to an expert. Mrs., okay, okay. We, I'm just joking, just joking, but I was serious about the expert. And basically, we can regulate what?
We can require no more than one off-street parking space per dwelling unit.
All right. That, that's what you wanted clarification on? Okay. You might want to just stand by one, one minute. We might just need your expertise.
So that's fine.
Okay, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, ma'am.
She still has the floor.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Weidus, you mentioned front versus rear. So when we're looking at, we're trying to find a balance here. Like, if we, we have to make a decision by September 1st, so if we're looking as a council and you're telling us to help you find a balance that's also cost-effective on the other side from y'all's perspective as developers, where is that middle ground for us? Can you help me get there? Because I'm not, I'm not seeing it. But we have this mandate that was put on us that we have to follow. Can you help me find the middle ground? What does that look like?
I mean, I, I think that there is a width. Again, it's subjective to me.
Of course.
If you do a 30-foot lot, I wouldn't do one front-loaded, to be honest. That would just be me. It is too narrow. I agree, it's hard to make anything look good and have it front-loaded and be a 30-foot lot. I understand that. I don't necessarily disagree with it in that situation. But if you say it's a 50-foot lot or 45-foot lots are extremely, are normal now, they're all over the place. And if you go to nice subdivisions everywhere, you know, 45, 40-foot lots are normal, and you could build very nice-looking houses that are front-loaded on those. But, and again, like, I guess what Kyle was getting at before with the parking requirement is that when you require a onsite parking, or an off-street parking space for each unit, and you're requiring it to be in the back of that lot, it stops you from doing different designs or different things, like I was saying, where you do perpendicular parking, you do perpendicular parking for a group of homes over here and then still have your house.
Can I pause you there? Was, I don't believe there was a requirement for off-street parking in the back? I don't recall that being the issue. Was that the recommendation from staff? I thought it was just garage parking, but the one off-street was?
For lots smaller than 50 feet in width, they must have one parking space, and that parking space must be in the back.
It is.
If it's a lot greater than 50 feet.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I've been trying to tell you.
Yeah, sure.
And I don't know if we can go back to the, the picture examples, but I can kind of speak to that a little bit if you want.
They're pulling the slides up now.
Yes, ma'am.
When you do development on those homes, the small lots, that's the only way you can build that house? That the way, in the alley, putting the garage in the back? Is that the only way to build them on a, on a small lot?
As proposed, in, in the draft ordinance that's before you tonight, the proposal would be that if your lot is less than 50 feet, meaning 45, 47 feet wide, the one required off-street parking space must be in the rear. And, and the reason for that is?
No, I understand that. What I'm asking you is that, my question is, is that the only way you can build it without putting it in the back? Can you put it anywhere else? The garage? It must go in the back?
If your lot is less than 50 feet in width?
Yes.
It must go in the back?
Okay.
Or not exist at all. So you, there is, theoretically, you could build a single-family detached home with no garage at all and no parking space.
Okay. So I'm gonna give Mr.?
Madam. Yeah, you're right. So, the off-street, the off-street part, the one required off-street parking space does need to be in the rear. And the reason for that is to preclude the, the types of homes that, that we've put in the, in the presentation as examples where there's a single-family home and there's essentially a paved parking space in front of the home. That's not to say that we couldn't negotiate something different through a PUD.
Ms. Mesher, and then can I pause you there? Because I still have, ma'am, the floor. So what you were recommending then, sir, was instead of, we agreed that the frontload, having backloads, okay, but having the apartment-style parking, covered parking separate, that one space, separate from the home and a separate area in that subdivision, would that be an option? Could that possibly be an option for them as a middle ground, instead of having the one spot in the back?
The new legislation states that we can't require off-site parking.
It's not off-site, though. Is that still off-site?
The, the one, the one parking space that we can require can be onsite, but we cannot require it to be off-site.
Okay, Mr. Weidus, you want to say something?
Yeah, sorry. I think it was, the main point for me was just that it was required to be onsite. When you require something to happen, it kind of inherently limits you also. So with that, again, it kind of comes to, where we're trying to see if these developments are feasible, what we can do, we think about all these things. We look at y'all's codes, we look at what we can do, and then we use that to guide our design. So there's a lot of different things that we think about and say, can we do this? We look to your code and says you can't. So it kind of just automatically gets nixed. And there's a lot of different things that we would like to do, it's just we don't have the option, especially with the ordinance, the way that it is right now, it's, you're gonna do, if you're gonna do a small lot, you're gonna do an alley. That's pretty much what it's gonna be. No one's gonna do a 50-foot alley.
Or a putt. She gave you an option. I was looking at the house design. What you think about a putt?
I mean, I think being forced to enter into a putt is not effective either, because once, and it's kind of been said before, that once you enter into a putt, it opens up everything. Everything's subject to change. Everything's up to, to negotiation. And that means I can be, if I have to enter into a putt, I could be forced to do other things I don't really want to do. Which some of them, you know, may be things we're gonna do anyways, but it's still subjecting. It's a lot of unknown that whenever we go in, we try and underwrite these subdivisions, we try and do effective design, not knowing what we're trying to hit in the beginning is really hard. So what we're trying to do is get the guidelines just so we can have a better design.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. And no more. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. Councilwoman Gonzalez, you still have them? Okay, Councilwoman Solomon, I'm sorry. Councilmember Solomon.
Right, Councilmember Solomon.
Councilmember, what did I call you? Let me correct that. It's Councilmember, not woman. Councilmember Solomon.
I wanted to ask, Mr. Kegel, do we have to decide on this, this, today? Is it, what would happen after September 1st? Could not we? I mean, is, is it a must that we have to?
No, sir, it's not a must. But what happens after September 1st if someone comes in with one of these developments? That meets this criteria, you have to accept it. So it's just up to you. But no, there's no requirement that we have to do this tonight.
Okay. So, and, and the next question with this is that could not, having said that, could not we, you know, we have the developers, I'm saying, why could not we come up with something? And Maximus Wallace as well, you know? You know, we said that we would be working with the developers more. So I'm, I'm saying, could not it be possible that we could come up with something from that? Or y'all just, it's just the way it is? I mean, together?
From my, from my perspective, I think this ordinance that's before you tonight is a bit of a stopgap measure, with, with the idea being that this legislation goes into effect on September 1st. So by putting this in place, it is in some ways a, a stopgap measure that would prevent a developer for, from coming in on September 1st with a proposal for several hundred acres of 30-foot lots that all have front-facing garages. This is, it's a, it's a mechanism by which we have a better starting point for a negotiation for a PUD. It's, it's also, I mean, I think ordinances can be amended at any time.
Okay, so when do we find out?
So we could, we could theoretically amend it after it's adopted.
I'm sorry. But so when do we find out this was September 1st? Was this just recently?
About two months ago, as I recall.
Right. But the, the timeline to get on P, you have to go through P and Z first, and for all that, I mean, we're, what's the total?
The, the process to get through P and Z to council takes about eight weeks. And we found this, I, I mean, all in all, we spent maybe a week, a week and a half drafting this ordinance, tops. It was very quick, very, very quick.
Okay, because I'm, I'm just trying to find a happy medium that where we, if we're taking this long to decide, it seems like it's?
Councilmember Solomon, you keep standing by, the senior attorney will be in the comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you, it's your time, Mike, to make sure she may answer your question.
I didn't necessarily want to interrupt you. I just wanted to make sure I got a chance to speak before a vote, so I didn't want to interrupt you, but I, I wanted to address.
You already got this.
I think, I can address the question also that you were just asking about, that we, this did come about and was passed about a couple of months ago. We did know that the bill was being considered, but you don't know until it's passed how it's going to, what, what the final is going to be, and then it does take obviously time to get through the PNC process and the council. But I wanted to say, there are, with this ordinance, there are several things that are addressed other than just the alley requirement. And so I think it would be important to pass most of it to address the, the rest of, of the requirements that are, that are going to be in effect September 1st. And so you could do that one of two, or at least one of two ways. One way would be to pass it as, as recommended with, with the direction that it come back to have additional commentary on the alley requirement and options there. Or you could pass it, the only, the only section, when you're looking at the ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mesher, is section, is the last section of the ordinance, it's subsection four, off-street parking. There are two sentences there. All small lots must contain at least one off-street parking space per residential. And then if the lot's less than 50, 50 feet, then it has to have the, the backloaded alley. So you could adopt this ordinance, removing that, and then we could come back. But again, there, that, that, that wouldn't allow the stopgap that Ms. Mesher was, was talking about to, because if you adopt it without that language, then a development could come in without that regulation at all, without the, so, so again, you could go back to adopting it as-is with the direction of coming back to revisit that last off-street parking section.
Well, well, thank you. Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Kegel. So then, that brings another question then. If we, could not we, if we pass this, everything, and then come back and maybe add more options?
Yes, you could do that.
Okay, what, what, what options can we have?
I mean, if there is any.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to see, what options? Because I'm hearing there is no option.
I mean, considering.
I just don't want the council to be in a position where we don't have a say, this is all we got on how our city develop. I, I don't like that. Okay, yeah, I am against alley, but I don't like just giving me one option and, and we gotta take this. No, that's unacceptable. But Councilman Solomon.
Madam Mayor, what I was saying is that if we could, you know, just so we can stopgap and then come back with, add to this and saying, hey, yes, we, we'll do this, but we, we must come back at a certain time and add options, suggested options perhaps from the developers. And just add that. But I think that we need options. I don't think that should be, this should be one, this is my opinion, this be one thing. I really think that we need other options. And so what I'm saying is that we could, if we could prove this with in mind adding that we would come back and would other options?
Counsel has that option if they want to make that motion.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm saying, ma'am. You're right.
You have that option as a councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You finished, Councilman Solomon? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, madam. And so I do, I would make that motion. I just want to confirm, realistically, our next council meeting would be September 1st. Is that correct? September 2nd, I'm sorry. So if we, my motion, I make, can I make it now, or do we need to?
We need to close the public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. September 2nd, thank you.
Sir, we're not finished, sir. We're in public hearing. We know that. We know that. I apologize.
I was gonna ask about the public hearing being closed, and I'd like to make a motion afterwards as well, but I'll wait till after the public hearing.
Thank you, because you heard that they want to say something. Mr., Mr. Weidus, thank you. I, you, thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, sir, what is your name? Sir?
Hi. Yes, sir. Charles Amundson.
How you spell your last name?
A-M-U-N-D-S-O-N. I apologize, I was a word like a child.
Sir, no, I don't have it, but you can come on up. You can come on up. It could have been, Mr. Kegel, look, it could have got crosshair with a, a citizen comment, so I wasn't cutting you off. You gonna speak?
I apologize.
No, you so nice. No, sir. Okay. So say your name for Madam Secretary, because we working on it.
Charles Amundson.
Mr. Reynolds?
All good?
Sir, I apologize for that. Continue.
I just want to bring in the fact, you know, with this whole alley thing, so we're building a street, and then so we're building another street. You know, these 30-foot lots, you know, they're, you know, they're, they're gonna be cheap houses. There's no way to justify a second street, so, I mean, isn't this whole thing just kind of a, it's kind of obvious, it's just the whole, you know, the whole point here is to shut down the, the regulation, to shut down the, the whole zoning? Is the whole point of this, this ordinance to shut down the zoning?
Oh, that's a, over my head. Ms. Mesher, Mr. Reynolds, can Ms. Mesher, can I get you to answer a question of Mr. Zager?
It's obviously not feasible to build two roads for a 30-foot lot.
So what was your question, sir? What was your question, sir?
To build this alleyway just doesn't seem feasible to build a 30-foot lot.
No, no, no. You was asking about the state and maybe the city attorney, because I don't know. What was your question about the shut down what?
I, I'm just curious, is, is the whole point just to shut down this, this zoning? It, it doesn't, you know, it just doesn't seem like it makes sense to?
Mr. Kegel, somebody?
To build, you know, two streets for?
I don't mind answering it.
For a 30-foot lot, you know?
No, I, because I believe...
It seems like the whole point is just to shut down the zoning, you know, you, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to build two streets, you know, for a thirty-foot lot. Does that make sense to anybody else? So, so you're, you're building, you're building a house on a thirty-foot lot. You're already building one street. To build a whole alley, you're asking us to build an entire second street to build this same thirty-foot lot?
Well, alley, oh, I, oh, I get what you're saying.
You're building two streets for one little baby house here. I mean, to me, that, right off the bat, that just isn't feasible. So, so the whole, the whole, the whole deal is, I think we're just trying to shut down, you know, the zoning is, is the obvious approach, I think. I mean, and to Mister Alvarez's point, you know, us as the builders, we're, we're putting on, you know, our time and energy and money into these builds.
Sir, we don't call out council members' names. You can direct it to me right here.
Yes, ma'am. Somebody wants to buy these little houses that, you know, if they can't park one car on it, what's, you know, what's to stop them from buying it, what's to stop us from building it? You know, I don't really understand. The, the garages, the, the garages in the rear, I mean, that's just not feasible to build these little houses with two streets. It's just not, you know. Even if the road, if the dirt, if the rear, the rear road is dirt, I mean, they're just going to get tore up. If you're building two improved roads, you're building curbs, you're building drainage, it just doesn't make sense to build two improved roads for one thirty-foot lot that you're going to build a house on. You know, I'm sorry, it just doesn't make sense.
Do you have an option, sir?
Yes, ma'am, well, don't build an alley, it, that just doesn't make sense. Financially, it doesn't make sense to build a house on a thirty-foot lot with two roads. You can't build an alley, it just doesn't work. So no alley. A garage up front, I mean, front-loaded garages, I, I don't think that makes sense. You build a driveway, or you park in the street, that gets crowded, but unfortunately, that's just the way it is. You get to park one, if you're buying a thirty-foot house, you're buying a thirty-foot house, you don't expect to park ten cars in front of it.
Mister Kegel, don't, I would, thank you, Mister Kegel, your time up, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, sir, okay, last person, I think. Oh, Garrett Persa. Jesus. Hey, Mister Persa, how are you? I didn't see that coming. How you doing, Mister Persa?
I tell you, I'm hungry, sleepy and hungry.
Well, Mister Persa, Mister, Mister Persa, before you start your time, you have three minutes.
Okay.
If you have anything directed to me, okay, well, give it to her before your time, sorry, because when you're three minutes up, if the council don't give you an extra minute, you gotta take your time. So I don't want to take up your time with us passing it out.
I just want to know what clock we're going off of.
Sir, it's clock, it's not going, this one right here.
No, when it does go, this one ain't matching up good today.
Right, I agree with you, but it's not the clock, it's that people are going overnight and stop them. So, sir, please.
Can I tell them what they got, or my...
Once you open your mouth, sir, I'm starting the clock. That's how, you gotta be, sir, that's fair, that's just being fair.
Bless your heart.
Ooh, that's nice. Mister Persa, lead the secretary along now. I know you, oh, I know you. All right, do, have everybody look for them, okay. All right, Madam Secretary, Mister Persa, are you ready? Because you already telling the public I owe you five seconds, are you ready?
If the, if the council wants to look at it, they're ready, I'm ready, or if they want to take a minute, I'm fine with that.
Did he give us two sheets? What's this? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Somebody say let it, what?
Let it rip?
Everybody else? Okay, Mister Persa, Madam Secretary, Mister Persa, time is starting now.
Okay, then I get to talk. What I brought you all was just some pictures like staff has showed you. Tried to get you an assortment of different products that are out there. All I did was Google it, forty-foot lots, homes on forty-foot lots, thank you, sir. And so we saw some pictures a while ago that were not too attractive. And I tried to give you all an assortment, right, where you can take and look at both, both deals. The ones we saw up here a while ago, no architectural design, pretty bland. I don't want you all to led down the wrong path. There's other products out here, and there's other ways to build them. But all in all, what we're talking about is what we call a double-faced lot. So we're trying to get affordability, but we're going to build two roads for one lot. And the gentlemen's told you, you all already heard it, we're circumventing affordability when we do that. And so I've heard Madam Mayor say options, I've heard the city manager say flexibility. So flexibility and options, that's two nice words. I would ask tonight, that, this thing is breaking ground for all of us, right? We're, we're treading on new water. So give us the flexibility, the option to, to have just a street or an alleyway. We're not, not forced to do alleyways, because that's going to add tremendous cost. Engineering cost, everything. So tonight, I would ask you all for options or for flexibility, and this is a work in progress. Mister, young man down here at the end of the table said it earlier. We can always change it, right? We can come back and address it, and we can come back and see what's working and what's not working and what we don't like. So it's not, it's not that we have to live with what you all do tonight. But the alleyways are critical, or the, and the garages in the front, which I've showed you all pictures. But I would like the flexibility and the option of being able to do it with or without an alleyway. I don't know the cost of an alleyway yet, but I will figure that out, because I don't know what the criteria is going to be. I'm assuming it's going to be in the homeowners association. But somebody has to pay for two roads on, on each side of their house. That's adding cost, and that's what we're trying to circumvent. We're trying to get costs down affordable. So I would ask for options to be able to do it with or without alleyways, and with the understanding that we can bring it back and we can tweak it, or whatever, whatever you all want to do.
Mister Persa, your time is up, but I have a question. Do you have this?
Do I have what?
This, this, these nice pictures.
Yes, ma'am, I probably got one of them.
So my question to you is, is this thirty-foot, forty-foot, or fifty-foot? What is it? Forty?
Yes, ma'am, and, and can I, can I say something?
No, sir, what I'm, could you explain, you give us a package?
Yes, ma'am.
And could you explain the pictures? Because this is nice, and I don't even know if this, this is an option, but I don't even know if it falls within our ordinance. It's like we got it, but...
I, I mentioned a while ago, mayor, that all I did was Google up houses on forty-foot lots, and it pulls up pictures, that's where it came off of. And I, I don't know much about the internet, I don't much about computers, but I just Googled up houses, floor plans for forty-foot houses. And I was disappointed a while ago, mayor, I don't remember, I think Mister Solomon called it, I didn't catch it. The awful-looking stuff we looked at a while ago, that staff gave us, was on a twenty-five-foot lot. So that, that's not, that's kind of misleading to me, because the product didn't look good. So I tried to give you all just the pictures that came up. And there's some in here I like, and there's some I don't like, and I'm sure you all have the same feeling.
Okay, so Mister, I, I thank you for options. But the reality of affordability, I just got a quick question, you don't, you don't have to answer. How much would this home cost?
Ma'am, I do not know. I'm not a builder, but I did ask some questions, and I think that you're still looking around, and I don't know, but I can find out, because the people that I sell lots to could tell me, because they build them. Excuse me, but I think you're still looking at two hundred thousand, plus or minus two hundred thousand. But a lot of these houses out here now are three hundred and three thirty and three forty. So it's a significant difference, but I, I can find that answer out.
Yes, sir, what is your, what is your, what is your option? Give us an option.
My, I, I'll tell you, mayor, my option is for you all to let us do it with or without alleys. Let, let us build them, or let us develop at our discretion with either the alleys or the street.
Yes, sir.
That's the options.
All right, sir, just stay there, I've got a question for you. Mister Kegel, you, you click to talk.
There we go. Just a comment on the legislation. Isn't it interesting that, that this legislation doesn't apply to the wealthy suburbs? That if you're really concerned about affordability, why doesn't this apply to every square inch of the state of Texas? Think that's interesting. But to answer the gentleman's question earlier, I think I was pretty clear. What we said was, we need some, we put some stopgap up here, and that, you've heard they don't want to do a pud, they don't want to do anything. But what we were trying to say, you can do this right, alley loaded, but if you want to come in with other options, then come in and do a pud. That's, that's what we said very clearly, because if we just go with the legislations as it's passed, you're not going to get this, the stuff that you're looking at now. I've been there. The developers do, and builders do what they have to do, but then they're gone and we're left with it. And I've been there when you're left with this small lots, lot stuff with big families and lots of cars. It's, you, you get council chambers full of people with complaints. So it's a tou, it's a very tough subject. I respect the people on, on both sides of it, we're, we're all struggling of how to deal with this.
Mister Kegel, this not feasible, the bill?
I didn't say that.
Oh, oh, that's all I want to know. Okay, so it's feasible. Councilmember Kendrick?
My question was, and Ms. Messer, the pictures that was just presented, it was thirty-foot lots, right?
Forty-foot lots.
Forty?
Yes, sir.
But if we go, can we exempt doing thirty-foot lots according to the law?
I'm not familiar with the law, I think you go down to twenty-five foot.
I think you got a, you, you have an interesting idea there, because what we said was the cutoff was fifty. You could make the cutoff forty.
Okay, so, so if we make the cutoff forty, then we don't have to worry about the, the back?
Alley.
The back galus, so if we put that...
Well, you, you still would for lots less than forty-foot.
That's, so when we have to do lots less than thirty?
Forty.
Less than forty. We, we couldn't tell a citizen or a builder that they couldn't do one at thirty. So we're still left with the, the idea of if we put these, the thirty-foot ones, they have to have the, the, everything in the back.
Or they could come in with a P U D and try to, yeah, on the, but it's, it's...
Right, it's, it's twofold, and what I'm saying is, just like you explained, it's the evolution of things, and things have changed, and we have to change with it a little bit in accordance with the law. We don't have a choice. We have to change, and the law is written now, so we have to find a way that the city and the developers all can work together on this to where we are falling within the, the realms of the law, correct?
Yes, sir, I agree, and, and try to get affordability back in the picture. But can I address one thing about this pud?
The court, oh, is that, anybody asked him a question about the pud?
Mister Kendrick talked about a pud, and the, and the city manager did. I've been involved in puds before, and, and they're, they're telling you kind of what's right, it's a negotiation. And we go to talk to the city staff, and we got to negotiate with them. Well, guess where that goes? That didn't go good for us, because we don't... Flexibility and options.
Thank you, thank you so much, flexibility. So with that being said, Councilmember Segar has a question for you, because Mister Persa.
I just want to clarify what was just said here between the city manager, because I thought, you know, fifty-foot wide lots, that's set by the, that's us setting that, right? It's not, what is the state requirement, thirty-foot?
We have to allow the lots as small as thirty feet.
Thirty feet. So if we allow a lot thirty feet, then in that case, we say it has to have a garage in the back and all that. So we can say anything thirty feet or less has to have that. If it's forty or fifty feet.
Yeah, right now, we don't allow them below, we don't allow them below thirty. A lot of, any building on any lot below thirty feet.
The presentation that we had earlier, that had thirty-foot lots, how wide were those lots?
No, Ms. Messer said that we're having a hard time finding examples, so some of those examples you saw were twenty-five feet.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to clarify, I mean, I know we don't allow them now, but if we do allow them and say, okay, we have thirty or forty foot, that's the condition that we can set to say, that's where you have these backload, and then...
Yes, sir.
What's going to happen is nobody's going to build those, because it costs too much money.
Well, they're built in lots of places, but...
I don't think they're going to build them here.
Yeah, you're probably right.
And, and that's, to me, that sounds like a, a solution, don't you think?
What's the solution?
I, I think...
What's the, wait a minute, what's the solution?
If we say, in order to build those backload garages, if you build it a lot and it's...
Thirty?
Thirty feet or less, then you have to do that.
You can't go less, and that's the same thing.
Or thirty, thirty feet.
That's certainly an option, yes, sir. That's some flexibility.
But if it's fifty feet or wider, you don't have to do that. You don't have to worry about...
Forty. And you're, I, I think I understand you, thirty-foot and less, you're, you're talking about the alleyway, thirty, thirty-foot and more, you're, it's...
You're eliminating having to do an alleyway.
Right.
Can somebody clarify this, Mister, Mrs., with the law? Please clarify what this Councilmember Segar stated with Mister Persa.
The statute that is going to go into effect September 1st does not allow the city to require that a lot be wider than thirty feet. And so the proposed ordinance says that you can't have, so it makes thirty feet the minimum. And then in addition to that, it says any lot less than fifty feet is when we would require the alley. So there was some discussion about reducing that fifty feet to forty feet, because there was discussion about forty-foot lots being able to do something different. So if we wanted to change the ordinance to say that if a small lot is less than forty feet in width, then the alley would be required, is that...
That's where I'm getting at, that's, that's city ordinance, that's not state, right?
Right, this, the statute...
So we can adapt and say forty feet.
Right, the statute says that we can't require that the lot be greater than thirty feet wide.
For the tiny homes.
Tiny lots, small, small lots.
Small lots.
I'm confused on that. What did the state say? What's the minimum size state law now? Twenty-five? Thirty is the minimum size?
That twenty-five, when you put it up there and I asked the question, that twenty-five is what threw everybody off. That's why you hear I'm constantly saying it, but it's thirty. So what, what, can we understand what both of y'all are saying? Because I don't want to say time is a bad thing.
Well, what I'm saying is, if we were to change the ordinance, instead of requiring it at fifty feet, forty feet, and say anything below forty feet or whatever, that's what's going to require that back in. And what's going to happen is, people are not going to build those smaller lots, because they don't want to pay all that extra, but it's there. Are we in compliance with the state by doing that? I mean, it's there, it's regulated, you know, we, we, we're, we're following it, but the market's going to take care of itself. If somebody wants to build a tiny home, and they want it thirty feet or forty feet under, then they're going to have to build an alleyway.
That ordinance would be in compliance with state law, because the ordinance is allowing the lot to be at least, to be thirty-foot, thirty-foot, but then it's a requirement, if it's less than forty, it's going to be alley loaded, and that would be in compliance with the statute.
That's what I mean, it's statute of the state or us? Is it something that we have to change?
When I say statute, I'm talking about the state statute.
State statute.
Ordinance is the city local ordinance.
Okay, residents, it's raised your hand, you cannot speak from the audience. You have not spoken, ma'am. You have the option to go and sign up for public hearing to give your comments. Mister Persa, this is your last com, oh, well, Kendrick, is your question for him? Okay, sir, do you want to close out? Because I think there's a misunderstanding.
I'm, I'm pretty good, I would like to address that, what we just talked about.
Oh, Councilman Segar, you were talking to him.
Since it was his question. Mister Segar, for me, again, this is uncharted for the cities, for the developers, for the builders, for the buyers. It's uncharted water. So we're going to have some lumps. But as a developer, I would probably do some with no alley, and then I may try a small piece, say twenty or thirty lots or a block with an alley. And maybe I do two with no alley, I do one with an alley. And then I, guess what, I'm going to see what the market does. Where do my builders sell? They sell two to one with the alley, or they sell two to one with no alley? So I'm going to do some market analysis once I see what happens. Market tells me what to do. That would be something I would look at personally.
Yeah, because I, I think I, we need a little bit more clarification on what I was just talking about earlier, because I think there's something there, just I'm not clear.
That's what I'm trying, it is, but if we don't, we, we, somebody make a motion now. When I close, it's, uh, when she finished, and we just take some stuff out and bring your recommendations back, because we can go on this all night. Mister Persa, I have another person coming. I mean, not rushing you off, your time was up anyway, no disrespect. Thank you for your service.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Yes, sir. So, if you... You have three minutes, Ms. Bell. Oh, yes, ma'am, it's okay.
Good evening. I've been listening to the debate, and I just kind of had an idea where I was born and raised at, the city that I was born and raised in. The night water, the city, we kind of had that issue. So, what they did was, instead of going out, they went up, because we have small lots. And, yeah, so, instead of, instead of that way, it's a win-win for everybody. We don't have back alleyways, we not having an issue with the street parking, because you go up and the parking is underneath. So, that can kind of like, in the meeting, maybe, and y'all can, that would be an easier solution. They don't have to pay all the money for the alleyways. We have the parking that makes sense, and everybody can be happy. That's all I had to say. New Orleans.
Segaro, okay, because he, one of y'all was talking, Councilmember Segaro, come on. Y'all started it, and I cut you off, okay?
All right, let me see how I'm going to do this. For now, I think what I want to do is approve the first part, and then remove the second part. You know, like, city attorney, he had given us two options.
Yes, sir, okay.
And the second option was to remove that back-end garage entry.
Can I get clarity on, are you saying you want to remove the requirement completely, or change it from fifty to forty feet? If the lot is less than forty, you do want to require an alley?
Well, if, that's why I needed clarity, because I just wanted to make sure, because I want to do that, if that makes sense.
You want to require alley loaded for forty-foot and less?
Forty feet or less.
Okay, so, if you're not wanting to change anything else in the ordinance, and remember, this ordinance is also doing several other things other than just the small lots. So, you can move to approve the ordinance, but striking, but changing the last sentence of thirty-one dash four seventy-five B four to read, if the small lot is less than forty feet in width, then said parking space and garage it provided shall be access from the rear via an alley.
Yeah.
Yes, so, it would just change fifty to forty in the last sentence, so...
So, that's the motion.
Approve with that change.
Approve with that change of forty feet instead of fifteen. Did I say it right? Forty feet, whatever, forty feet or less, you have to abide by.
Okay, am I missing something? Okay, go on, could you explain that? I need a second before we have a discussion.
So, my understanding of that...
Before we can have a discussion. Council, well, it wasn't you, it was Gonzalez, you just took it.
You need a second.
Councilmember, stop playing, Councilmember Alvarez.
I'd like to second it, but I also want to make an amendment to it.
Okay, well, before you make your amendment, because we'll be here all night with amendment. Council, city attorney, would you explain to everybody what just happened?
Thank you. The motion, as I understand it, is to approve the ordinance as is with the one change. And to, instead of requiring an alley for fifty, for a lot, fifty feet and less, we're going to require alley loaded for forty feet and less lots.
Forty feet or less, that's...
So, that's the only change that's been, is included in the motion at the moment. And my understanding of that would be, because there was discussion about the forty-foot lot being able to have a different look, but we were more concerned about the smaller thirty to forty-foot lots.
Is there, can I, can I ask, is there like a distance requirement on that? Does that fall under, when you build a house next to each other? I know we have like a seven-foot, ten-foot, what is that?
Wallace.
Side yard.
Yes, that's mandated by state law. Walt, he's asking about the side setbacks.
The setbacks are set as required by state law, yes.
What is that, seven feet, five feet?
Five feet on the side.
I have it pulled up.
Yep.
Front yard, yeah.
Seventy-five feet of lot depth, fifteen-foot of front yard setback, side setback of five feet, and rear yard of ten feet. That's as prescribed by state law.
So, the intent, the reason is, because, you know, when a builder looks at it, it's like, if I build small lots, I'm going to have to abide by. I think what's going to happen, from my perspective, they're not going to do that. I mean, if they do, then they're going to have to abide by that, but it's going to, am I reading that right? You know, because they're going to say, okay, if I build this small lot that's forty feet or smaller, wider, I'm going to have to put in a garage in the back, is that, am I reading that correctly?
If your question is whether a developer will want to build an alley in the back or not...
No, no, well, that's going to be up to them, but I'm saying, if they come in and say, I got these lots, they're forty-foot wide, that's when that kicks in. If they have a lot that's fifty...
And that's one thing I did want to clarify, because right now, the language as it's written, where Holly's, Ms. Clemens is saying, you'll change the fifty to forty, reads, if the small lot is less than fifty, meaning a fifty-foot lot, if it is fifty point zero zero feet wide, does not require a rear alley. If we change fifty to forty, a forty-foot lot would not require a rear alley, but a...
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Thirty-nine-foot lot would.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
Okay. So, if the language as written is changed from fifty to forty, then a forty-foot exact lot would not require a rear alley, but a thirty-five or thirty-seven or thirty-eight would?
Yeah, perfect. So, I know we had a second, so...
No, you already got a second, but he wants to make an amendment to what you said.
Well, and maybe Jose will, maybe Mr. Segaro will go along with this. I like exactly what you said, it's what I was thinking, I think it's middle-of-the-road compromise for now. In addition to that, if, you know, the development community would want to get with staff and provide some constructive criticism and alternatives, and then bring that back to us for our next meeting September second. You know, if y'all can work together that fast, if not, you know, give us another date. But I'd like to see some more, you know, constructive thoughts come from this. Like, everybody said here, this is kind of reactionary, because of the position that the state legislature put us in, and we're trying to use this as a stopgap. I think moving it to only be required below forty-foot lots makes sense, since we currently allow fifty-foot lots already in SF-1. So, anyways, that would be my only amendment, would be for them to get with the development community, see if they can come back with some more alternatives that we can revise that ordinance with in the future.
Councilmember Segaro, can you second that motion?
I'm good with that.
All right, all in favor, any more discuss, okay, everybody gone. I'm seeing that I'm not going to get options, so I lost, I want to make my own amendment.
Can, we haven't seconded the amendment, I can go back...
You just seconded it.
Did I second the amendment?
You just seconded it.
Okay, I was going to go back and change the original, so we don't have to vote twice, but...
If you want to rescind the motion, then the second, and then restate the motion.
That would only vote once.
Let's do that.
So, I rescind my amendment, and then I rescind the original motion, and then I add, the original motion, it's got to be less than forty feet.
And Councilmember Alvarez?
Everything has recommended with the change of forty feet. And for the staff to go back and reach out to the development community, come back with any other ideas, did I say it right?
Yes, Councilmember Kendrick, you rescind the original motion. You can't second, because he hadn't rescinded the first motion.
Yes, he did, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, he was, I don't know what y'all doing.
I wasn't trying to second the motion, I still have a question.
Can I get a second? If you said, okay, thank you. Okay, you can go.
When we're talking about forty feet, I want clarity. Forty feet, they don't have to have a rear garage.
Thirty-nine or less.
But if we say, we're saying, but you, you got a, the motion need to say thirty-nine, not forty. Because if, no?
He has the floor, respect him.
I'm just, I'm asking, I just want clarity, that's it.
Yeah, they're attacking an amendment.
I just want clarity, because the way that I understand it, if we're saying forty, and you don't have to, but you're saying forty or less. So, if someone comes with forty...
Ms. Mechner.
That's what I'm trying to get clarity on, that's it.
The language in the proposed ordinance reads, if the small lot is less than forty feet in width, then said parking space or garage, if provided, shall be access from the rear.
Okay, that's all I wanted, was clarity, thank you.
Chief Lopez, okay, all in favor, with Reynolds. All in favor of the motion, yes, all opposed, no? Who doing? Okay, when you pray, you... Okay, motion carries five to zero. Oh, I didn't adjourn, I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm trying, say it again, Councilmember Segaro.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, now I get it, me to adjourn.